Vice President Canepa, the time is now nine oh one AM and you can call the meeting to order.
Great, thank you very much. Good morning colleagues, staffs, members of the public. It's nine AM on November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are calling this meeting of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors to order. Let's start with have the clerk of the board provide information how the public can participate in this meeting.
Thank you. Members of the public, live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom, please click the Interpretation Globe icon in your Zoom webinar controls, and that's like the Spanish language. At this time, I would like my colleague Victor Hernandez to provide these instructions in Spanish.
Thank you so much, Suki. Vice President Canepa, Honorable Supervisors, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Niblin, all county staff, members of the public, Victor Hernandez with On Point. Buenos dias. As queremos dejar saber a los miembros del público que las instrucciones para poder participar en lo que es la reunión de hoy se encuentran en lo que es en el orden del día que ha sido publicado. Estas instrucciones proporcionan información de cómo presentar comentarios en escrito y también cómo participar a través de la plataforma de Zoom. Se les proporcionará interpretación indirecto, es decir, simultáneamente de toda esta reunión en español. Para poder acceder a estos servicios de interpretación indirecto, usted tendrá que hacer clic en lo que es un icono de un globo, es decir, un mundo, y después seleccione su idioma que sería el español. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for those instructions. With that, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. I understand that Supervisor Slocum plans to participate remotely in today's meeting pursuant to the provisions of AB two four four nine. At this time, I'm going to ask County Attorney Niblin to work with Supervisor Slocum and this board to establish the appropriateness of remote participation under AB two four four nine.
Thank you. I just note actually that Supervisor Slocum's participating address and publication of the agenda, etc., was all done pursuant to the Brown Act. He's not participating pursuant to AB two four five nine, but he is participating remotely pursuant to the provisions of the Brown Act.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Niblin. We'll now have the roll call, please.
Sure. Thank you. Supervisor Pine?
Present.
Thank you Supervisor Corzo?
Present.
Supervisor Mueller?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Slocum?
Here.
Thank you. And Vice President Canepa?
Here. Thank you. It's now time for Honoring the Life of and Board Member Comments. Do any supervisor have comments on things to share for Honoring the Life of? Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. These are just more general comments. So I just wanted to make sure to share that, you know, the election results of the past week have been met with a wide range of reactions and emotions. Many communities are uncertain and fearful about what lies ahead. And I want everyone to know that in this moment of transition, I see them, I stand with them, and I am committed to the safety, dignity, and well-being of all of our county residents. San Mateo County is home to all of us, whatever our backgrounds or beliefs. As a daughter of immigrants in a mixed-status family and an ally to vulnerable communities, I know how important it is to stand up for, protect, and serve all of our neighbors. I am here to lead, especially in times of change and uncertainty. And this moment is precisely when we need to dig deeper and work together, guided by the values that make our community resilient. And I want to be clear that I, and I believe our board will continue to champion equity, inclusion, and belonging, and continue to advocate for vulnerable communities, including immigrants, LGBTQ plus people, religious minorities, women, and all who feel threatened, to ensure everyone has access to the resources and opportunities and protections that we all deserve here in our home. We are committed to continuing to protect, uplift, and create opportunity, and that that will not change. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Supervisor Mueller?
I just want to say I stand in solidarity with Supervisor Corzo in those comments. And I actually want to commend county staff. At our last board meeting, I actually asked her to report out from our county professional staff on work that they were doing in anticipation of this moment. I think our professional staff stands ready and has already activated precautions for our vulnerable communities, specifically our undocumented communities. I just want to go ahead and reiterate our support for our county professional team for that work and tell them how much we are grateful for it. I want to reiterate that that work has begun and taken place to assure the community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you all. We'll move to public comments. This is the portion of the agenda that is set aside for members of the public to come on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, but are not on the agenda for today's meeting, for matters that are listed on the consent agenda, and for matters that are set for closed session. Public comment for items that are on the regular agenda will be taken at the time the item is called. A public comment will be limited to one minute today.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I believe Supervisor Slocum might have a board report as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I appreciate the opportunity. Let me first comment on Supervisor Corzo's remarks. I personally really appreciate her taking the time to share those remarks with us and totally support us all standing in solidarity to do what we can during this period of transition and looking forward to January when the new president takes office. So thank you Supervisor Corzo for your leadership. It's appreciated, recognized, and valued. I just wanted to share briefly with you, members and members of the public, a summary, a fast summary of our veteran, annual Veterans Luncheon that took place last week. It was actually the ninth, count them, that's nine, annual Veterans Luncheons, luncheons. This year, we had nearly three hundred in attendance. And it's really cool to note that there were four World War II veterans that attended the lunch. And we certainly appreciate them taking the time to join us on that day. And obviously, it was a moving and emotional celebration for the honorees and for the audience. And the awardees this year, as you probably know, Enterprise of the Year went to the San Mateo Elks Lodge, who does a lot of work on behalf of veterans. We recognized our Congresswoman Anna Eshu as Patriot of the Year, given all her work in Congress on behalf of veterans everywhere in the country. And finally, we honored the Veteran of the Year, Bob Hoover from East Palo Alto, who is just an amazing person. Our keynote speaker was retired Vice Navy Vice Admiral Anne Rondow, who's the president of the Naval Postgraduate School in Monterey. She gave some important remarks. And just lastly, quickly, I wanted to share with you one of the videos about our Veteran of the Year, Bob Hoover. Bob Hoover, as I mentioned, is from East Palo Alto. He's ninety-two years old. He's an Air Force veteran who served in the Korean War and a community treasure for us all. He's done a great deal of work with the youth in East Palo Alto through his golf program and through the SWAG program. And if we could, if we have that video, Mr. Clerk, could we just play that? I think it's only three minutes, so it won't take that much time. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
I was born in Dallas, North Carolina, in nineteen thirty-two. And I was actually moved to a little town four miles from Dallas called De'Astonia. That's where I was raised by my grandfather. When I got out of high school, there was a draft at that time. I was at Lackland Air Force Base in Texas. That's where I had basic training in the Air Force. The military had only been integrated for a few years. I remember the first night I was in the barracks. There was like, I think, forty-five of us in this barracks, and I'm the only black guy. All the other guys are from the South. So this is my first experience with any kind of integrated environment. When I finished basic, I went to Lowry Air Force Base to be trained to be a gunner on a V-29 bomber. I played baseball on the baseball team. I was the only black guy on the team. And we went to Cheyenne, Wyoming to play another military team. We stopped at a restaurant to eat, and after a while, I realized that everybody's eating with me. So I called a waitress over and I said, I didn't get any food. And she said, well, I'm sorry to tell you, but we can't serve you here. And I'm sitting there in an Air Force uniform, and they're telling me that I can't eat in this restaurant. I was at Lowry for two years. They said, we're going to close this gunner school down because we're going to stop using V-29s. And they sent me to Langley Air Force Base in Virginia for my training in V-26s. We went to Nevada for survival training in the winter. We finished that. They sent us to Korea. I was at Kunshan Air Base for about a year. We came home in nineteen fifty-five. So I get home in May of nineteen fifty-five. I catch a bus, go up to Penn State from Philadelphia. I make the baseball team. Won twenty-five games in a row. Won it going to the College World Series. My senior year, and we go back to the College World Series again, I hit everything they threw up there. I got selected to play on the USA Baseball Team in the Pan American Games in nineteen fifty-nine. At the end of the Pan American Games, I got admitted to Stanford Graduate School of Physical Therapy. And I had applied for scholarship. They write me a check, and that's how I wound up in California.
Bob Hoover is one of the most amazing men I've ever met in this county. He has done more for youth than anyone in the history of this county. Bob was instrumental in getting kids to graduate from high school at a very high rate.
I get hired by the city in East Palo Alto as a community service coordinator. They knew about my history as working with young people. So I go to the school district and I ask them for some data on graduation rates for kids from East Palo Alto and East Menlo Park. And seventy percent of our kids are dropping out of high school. And we create an organization called the Youth Development Center specifically to address this high school dropout problem. Within five years, the dropout rate goes from seventy percent to fifteen percent.
It is amazing the way he has interacted and spent his entire life really focused on the youth in our community. His junior golf program in East Palo Alto has changed lives and our kids involved in golf.
The primary reason for me doing this was to get kids to be students. Golf was just a hook. We provided our kids with clubs. We paid their green fees. We paid entry fees for them to play golf in tournaments. We get everything to make sure they could have a great experience playing golf. It's been a great thirty years.
When I first came to the county, we started the SWAG program, Students with Amazing Goals. Bob was instrumental in getting kids to engage in the SWAG program and getting them to graduate from high school at a very high rate.
It's been a wonderful partnership between Living Peace and the county, Mike Callagie and Warren Slocum. They were courageous to put this money into a community-based organization. We just had our one-hundredth college graduate this year, who never would have been there without Living Peace.
He has done so much for this county. We're just so grateful for his service. There will never be another Bob Hoover in this county again.
You can't explain what it's like to watch a kid go from having no clue about what's going to happen in their life and see them become great students, great people. It's amazing. It's probably been more valuable to me than it has been for the kids. And I guess that's why I'm still doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President and members of the board. Thank you, Bob Hoover.
Sorry Supervisor Slocum, go ahead Supervisor Slocum.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for indulging me and watching that video. Also, would just thank again Bob Hoover for all of his work. The SWAG program is amazing. I remember when Mike and I first went to East Palo Alto to talk with the kids and Bob about the SWAG program. And it's been an amazing journey. So thank you to everybody, especially Living Peace, for all the help that you've given to the kids of our community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Callagie?
Thank you, Vice President Canepa. I just also wanted to echo my sincere appreciation for President Slocum, for his leadership in East Palo Alto, and for people like Bob Hoover. He is truly one of the most incredible human beings I've ever met. The selflessness of this man to give his life, someone who's highly educated, a degree from Stanford, gave his life to the kids of East Palo Alto and literally changed hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of lives down there over these years. I shudder to think where we would be in this world without a Bob Hoover in East Palo Alto. I'm just so thankful for his service, not only to this country in the Korean War and his time in the service, but for his service to this county and the youth of this county.
Great. Thank you very much. Any additional comments from my colleagues? Okay. With that, we'll go to public comment in the chambers, and then what we'll do is we'll go remote.
Thank you, Vice President Canepa. We'll start off with Mercedes Segura. And once again, it's going to be a one minute per person.
Good morning. We have made significant progress in our collective bargaining negotiations with the county. And as a chapter chair of SEIU Local Five Two One, representing over two thousand two hundred county employees, I am thrilled to announce that last Friday, we reached a tentative agreement. Our bargaining team will be recommending a yes vote to the membership, and we appreciate your commitment to addressing the needs of our dedicated employees. However, let me be clear. This agreement marks only the beginning of our journey towards fair compensation for all county workers. We will continue to advocate for equitable wages across all classifications and will not rest until every worker in this county is not only valued and compensated fairly, but treated with respect. I will hold you accountable for ensuring the well-being of all employees under your jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mercedes.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President, the next speakers are, there are five speakers in total, and they're going to read one letter. So each person will get a minute, so we'll give them a total of five minutes. So, read time, and sorry if you could bring your group.
Buenos dias, miembros de la mesa de supervisores y público en general. Mi nombre es Trinidad Villa Gómez y soy miembro de la Mesa Directiva de Fe en Acción. Y estamos aquí con la coalición de organizaciones proemigrantes para entregar una carta. Estimados miembros de la junta de supervisores del condado de San Mateo, las organizaciones de derechos de los inmigrantes que firmamos esta carta, unidas por nuestra misión compartida de defender y reconocer los derechos de los inmigrantes, respetuosamente le solicitamos que tomemos medidas concretas para aliviar las inequidades y organizar la seguridad e inclusión de las diversas comunidades inmigrantes en el condado de San Mateo.
Dear San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, we, the undersigned Immigrants Rights Organization, united by our shared mission of upholding and recognizing the rights of immigrants, respectfully urge you to take concrete steps to ease anxieties and ensure the safety and inclusivity of the diverse immigrant communities in San Mateo County.
And her name is Trinidad Villa Gómez. She is the board member of Faith in Action Bay Area. Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors, staff, and members of the public. My name is Judith Guerrero. I'm the executive director for Cozai Hope, but I'm also an immigrant and a member of a mixed-status family. I'll continue reading the letter. Immigrant communities in San Mateo County come from all corners of the world. Mexico, China, El Salvador, the Philippines, and many countries across Europe, the Middle East, and beyond. These communities are currently experiencing a profound sense of alarm and fear in anticipation of the growth of discriminatory and hateful anti-immigrant rhetoric following the presidential election. This concern is not surprising. As throughout this election cycle, we have witnessed a surge in deeply divisive anti-immigrant patrol, including the treat of mass deportation. The destructive consequences of this rhetoric are already being felt, not only in our country, but across, not only in our county, but across the nation.
Good morning. I'm Rita Mansera, Executive Director of Fuentes. I'll continue reading the letter. On behalf of the undersigned organizations, we urgently call for your support of the following actions. Preserve and increase funding for rapid response and removal defense programs and for immigration legal services in general. Two, preserve the current sanctuary county ordinance passed by the Board of Supervisors in two thousand and twenty-three with amendments. Three, ensure swift and transparent investigations into any alleged hate crimes targeting individuals based on national origin, race, gender, ethnicity, or language spoken. Four, ensure there is no cooperation between law enforcement and federal agencies, particularly Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, who unlawfully target asylum seekers, refugees, and undocumented immigrants for deportation.
I'm Lorena Malgarejo. I'm the Director of Faith in Action Bay Area, and I'm here with some of our membership. By fostering an inclusive environment and being prepared to address potential challenges, we strengthen the trust, cohesion, and well-being of all residents in San Mateo County, which is home to many immigrant families. It is important to remember that we're all residents of San Mateo County, and many of our immigrant families are of mixed status. Some of them are voters and some of them are not. And all of us are advocating for the rights of those who could not vote in the recent elections. Additionally, many of the immigrants in our community are workers whose efforts put food on the tables and contribute to the essential services that make San Mateo County thrive.
Arlie Alston, Fuentes Program Director, and I will continue to read the letter. We will be submitting a separate letter to Sheriff Christina Corpus requesting that the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department adhere to our sanctuary ordinance and not cooperate with ICE. And we also want to thank you for your ongoing dedication and partnership in supporting the rights and dignity of our immigrant communities. We also appreciate the initiatives you've already undertaken and encourage you to continue defending immigrant families in San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers.
So just to make sure, Gerda Guzmán, did you speak? Okay. Judith Guerrero? Lorena Malgarejo? Arlie Alston? So no additional speakers from chambers. The matter of course, please proceed.
Thank you. Again, this is for the general public comment section for agenda items beginning on the consent agenda at number nineteen through number forty-one, which is closed session, as well as any county-related items not agendized. Three hands raised. Martin Fox, followed by Grace X. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Good morning, my fellow veterans. President Slocum and County Attorney Mr. Niblin, Supervisors Canepa, Supervisor Corzo, Supervisor Mueller, and County Executive Mr. Callagie. Thank you for your service to the county. Please make the county safer and healthier for persons living with serious mental illness and their families by supporting a vigorous implementation of the Governor's Care Court program. Make the redaction and passage of the repeal the Lennar Impeach Short Act a top county state legislative priority. Make the immediate implementation of Senate Bill Forty-three a top county health department priority, and the defunding of Disability Rights California Law Foundation of Silicon Valley defunded a top federal legislative priority. California's residents needed Dorothea Dixon-inspired compassionate mental health treatment system. And California's Lennar Impeach Short Act is one of the ten worst involuntary mental health treatment laws in the fifty states. So please make defunding the intellectually morally bankrupt Law Foundation of Silicon Valley and Disability Rights California a top county federal legislative priority as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Grace X, followed by Rick Chapput. Grace, please unmute and begin.
Yes, good morning. A few months ago, I stumbled upon an Instagram account that I found disturbing. It makes fun of mentally disabled people, homeless people, domestic abuse. And one video shows behavior involving a baby that deeply troubled me. For reference, I believe that this baby video is a stock video and does not belong to any member of any, a family member of anybody that I know. But it was disturbing nonetheless. Based upon my research, I believe the page belongs to a person that is on the Civilian Oversight Commission to the Sheriff's Department. And thus, I reached out to several, by several means, to confirm the page's ownership, including members of the Board of Supervisors. After the commissioner, I believe, owns this page, found out about my concern, the page was deleted, which adds even more proof of ownership. Instead, I've been attacked by him and a friend of his on the City Council of San Bruno. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Grace. Rick Chapput, followed by Mia Garcia. Great, Rick, please unmute and begin. Rick? Rick, if you, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Rick Chappu. I have been a deputy sheriff with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office for the past fourteen years. I would like to respectfully urge the Board of Supervisors to move forward with the Sheriff's Childcare Program as an essential and necessary program for the future of law enforcement professionals with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. In two thousand and nineteen, my wife and I made the difficult decision to move out of the Bay Area with our eighteen-month-year-old daughter in search for a better quality of life with the plans of a growing family in the future. This move turned my fifteen-minute commute into a two-hour commute with no traffic and a three-and-a-half-hour commute with traffic. This move was necessary due to the rise of cost of living in both the real estate market and childcare. My wife and I wanted to own a home in a safe neighborhood. And after looking at every option, the only affordable one was to move outside of the Bay Area. I'm now required to sacrifice more than fifty percent of my time at home with my family to remain an employee with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. While it's not an ideal situation for both my coworkers and myself, it is necessary to afford housing, childcare, and ensure the health and safety of our children's future. This program could give me the ability to move back to the Bay Area and be more present in both my daughter and son's life, which we all know is significant for their development. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mia Garcia. Mia Garcia, please begin.
Hello?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Detective Michael Garcia, and I'm with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. I'm currently assigned to the Professional Standards Bureau, working on recruiting and retention. I'd like to talk to you about the initiative of our daycare center and how it would impact our ability to recruit and retain new individuals to come work at the Sheriff's Office. This initiative has gotten nationwide attention, and I have gotten many calls from other agencies in regards to the details of this and how they can make it happen as well. Currently, we have many employees that have, cannot afford to live in our county, but with the ability of having childcare, childcare center would give them the ability for their spouses to work and have a dual income, which then in return would give them the ability to have a two-person household, household income to be able to afford to live in the county. Currently, I've talked to approximately ten lateral officers from this county that if this initiative was to happen, they would put in their application immediately. So please, please look, I look forward to seeing this initiative on the, on the agenda soon. Thank you for your, your ears, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. No further hands, Mr. President, Vice President.
Great. Thank you very much. I want to thank those who, who shared their comments. We will now take action to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda. Mr. Vice President, sorry. Sorry, Supervisor Slocum has his hand raised. Through the clerk, can you make sure-- we can't see it here. So just moving forward, if you can identify Supervisor Slocum. We can't see it on our screens. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I had two quick things. First thing, regarding the social media post, I'm just wondering, Mr. County Attorney, if there's anything that we might do on that, given the fact that allegedly the person is a member of the commission and made these posts or posts?
We can definitely take a look into it. I'm not-- I have not yet had the opportunity to, but we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Second thing is, Mr. Callagie, it seems to me, if my memory serves me right, that the last time we had this immigrant challenge facing us, we developed with the Office of Community Affairs a postcard that we distributed to small businesses and residents that gave them instructions on a number to call in case ICE showed up, et cetera. And I'm wondering if you could refresh my memory, and could we do that again if my memory serves me right?
President Slocum, I think your memory serves you well. I think we did, in fact, do that, and we're happy to duplicate that effort again and start that initiative.
Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks to all who shared their comments. We'll now take action to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda items. We're going to do some rearranging here. Are there any-- outside the changes that have been mentioned, are there any additional changes, Mr. Mueller, Mr. Pine? So with that, I'll make the motion to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda. I'll take item four before item three. That makes sense because they're both veterans items. So with that, that is my motion.
Second.
Sure, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller? Thank you, Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
And Supervisor Canapah?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, and the agenda is set, and the consent items are approved.
Great. With that, we'll now move to a presentation and awards. We'll start with item one, a presentation of a proclamation designating November twentieth, twenty twenty-four, as Transgender Day of Remembrance. Supervisor Pine is sponsoring the item. Supervisor Pine, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This item is a sober one, as we proclaim Transgender Day of Remembrance on November twenty in memory of those whose lives have been lost as a result of anti-transgender violence. As always, we use the opportunity this day to list the name-- the names of the individuals whose lives have been lost. Sadly, this year, there are thirty-two names. This year, the day is also marked by the unfortunate election results of last week, which have left many transgender people around the country feeling dejected and unsafe. That is why it is more important than ever for us as a Board of Supervisors and as a county at large to demonstrate support for our transgender brothers and sisters. The Transgender Day of Remembrance helps to raise the visibility of transgender and gender diverse people who demonstrate courage and resilience in the face of prejudice, discrimination, and violence. It also serves to heighten awareness of the need for elected officials, law enforcement, the media, and the community at large to address the challenges faced by these individuals. To that end, I wish to announce that tomorrow morning, we will raise the transgender flag in the courtyard here at County Center. During the ceremony, we'll hear from two brave individuals who identify as transgender, one of whom is a county employee and who will share their stories. Subsequent to that, the transgender flag will be flown at the flagpole on Veterans Avenue for the rest of the month. With that, I'd like to introduce Ariane Adriano, one of the co-chairs of the LGBTQIA+ Commission, to share a few words.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Pine. Thank you so much, Board of Supervisors and county staff. My name is Ariane Adriano. My pronouns are he/him. I am co-chair of the LGBTQIA Commission, and I'm happy to represent the Commission today. I live in South City, and I'm a full-time student at Stanford. Thank you for issuing the proclamation for Trans Day of Remembrance, also known as T-DOR, in this time of uncertainty and fear across the nation. T-DOR is nationally recognized annually as a tribute to those who have lost their lives to anti-transgender hatred or prejudice. As Supervisor Pine has said, especially in light of recent events, we have an essential call to fight for trans visibility each day and hour as their very existence is under threat of erasure. With this proclamation and recognition, I wanted to share more thoughts about Trans Day of Remembrance. The number of reported cases of transphobic-based hate crimes has more than doubled since nineteen ninety-nine. Over the last decade, more than one person per month nationally has died due to transgender-based hate or prejudice, regardless of other factors in their lives. This trend shows no sign of slowing. This year, we honor T-DOR with the proclamation and a flag raising that is happening tomorrow, Wednesday, November thirteenth, from nine to nine-thirty, right outside this building in the courtyard of County Center. Additionally, we invite the public to view a transgender Day of Remembrance altar at the Redwood City Library on Middlefield Road. This altar includes audio recording of the names-- of the reading of names, and will be open from November eighteenth to the twenty-fifth. A reading of the names PowerPoint file will be available and free to the public to download to hold their own services or T-DOR event. This download will also be available on our LGBTQIA Commission website. Now more than ever, we ask our allies for your support with visibility, inclusion, equality, and safety in San Mateo County for transgender community members. Thank you. And then we also have Natalie, who would like to share remarks.
Thank you, Vice President Canapah and Board of Supervisors, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Rodriguez, and Mr. Niblin. My name is Natalie Krug. I'm a transgender woman and a county employee. I come here today not as an official capacity as an employee, but as a member of the public and a member of the transgender community. Although the county is transparent about its support for the LGBTQIA community, the disinformation spread about transgender community which has been used for political gain on the national stage is concerning and only emboldens transphobic acts of harassment and violence outside and within the county. My community is scared for losing access to medicines that are critical for our survival, that gender-affirming services will no longer be provided at our healthcare providers due to federal intervention, that transgender youth will be further repressed, unable to confront their truth for fear of being bullied, unable to receive lifesaving gender care. We are frightened of being mentally attacked by a constant onslaught of hate speech and transphobic rhetoric, fearful of being assaulted in public or worse. Although the transgender community is anxious of what's to come, we are united in fighting for our rights, fighting for our lives. We support each other however we can. We are resilient, and we will not be erased. Hate and ignorance know no bounds, but the transgender community has compassion and love to spare for those who need it. If allies within the community will open their arms and raise their voices against institutionalized victimization, we can overcome the darkness ahead of us. I'm here to ask you to please commit to protecting all lives who are at risk of being hurt by hate. Thank you, Supervisor Corzo, for your comments at the start of this meeting. It's important to note that while the transgender community is not just concerned with issues affecting the LGBTQIA community, but any marginalized group which is suffering due to national policies which take away our rights and freedoms. My personal experience coming out as transgender at forty as a county employee and as a professional has caused me a lot of anxiety. However, the support I have received from the departments I work for, from county staff at large, has made a major difference for me. I can tell you that this is not a common experience held by others within my community. I am fortunate that I-- and I thank the Board for their work on these efforts and the LGBTQIA+ Commission, which has done to build a more equitable workplace. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And we have a proclamation to present. But first, we need to-- I'll make a resolution that the Board of Supervisors designate November twentieth as Transgender Day of Remembrance.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. With that, are there any of the board members who want to make any comments? Seeing none, do we have any public comment or remote comment?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. No speakers from chambers. So Madam Clerk, please proceed.
In Zoom, please click raise hand for item one, Transgender Day of Remembrance. No hands raised, Mr. Vice President.
Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. I just wanted to appreciate you both for being here today and showing up even when it's probably a little scarier now more than ever to do so. So thank you for your courage. Thank you for being you. And we will support you. We'll get through this together.
You want to take a roll call? Thank you. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
And Supervisor Canapah?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll now move to item two, presentation of a proclamation designating November twenty twenty-four as Adoption Awareness Month. Supervisor Corzo is sponsoring this resolution. Supervisor Corzo, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm really excited about this proclamation because we always have to find the joy even when there is fear or uncertainty. So each child and youth deserves a loving and nurturing and permanent home. Adoptive families support, provide supportive environments, and lifelong connections for children in foster care. Children waiting for adoption placements and the families who embrace them deserve our recognition and unwavering support. Adoption Awareness Month gives us that opportunity to not only celebrate families that grow through adoption, but to raise awareness for the need for adoptive families and to shine a light on the courageous children who are still waiting for their forever homes. Today, I'm very happy to welcome Coloma and Lauren Smith, who are joining us together with their adopted sons, Coloma Avery and Henry William. And I'd also like to invite John Fong, Director of Children and Family Services, to share a presentation and some remarks.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo, President Slocum, honorable members of the Board, County Executive Callagie, Assistant County Executive Rodriguez, County Attorney Niblin. I want to thank you for taking the time today to recognize National Adoption's Awareness Month. From the moment a child is brought into protective custody, our focus shifts to permanency. When children are unable to reunify with their parent or guardian, legal adoption is the next preferred outcome. Since January twenty twenty-three, children and family services staff and our team have finalized and assisted families with thirty-one permanent adoptions. That's thirty-one children who not only are not going to grow up in the foster care system, but rather with loving homes they get to call their own. That's also thirty-one resource families, like the Smiths here today, who made the ultimate decision to not only bring a foster child into their home, but to permanently make them a part of their family. That's what today is all about. And we'd like to share just one of many stories that illustrate the love and commitment our resource families have for our foster children in San Mateo County.
Hi, my name is Loren Smith.
My name is Coloma Smith.
My name is Henry Smith.
And Henry Smith is five years old.
And this is Coloma Avery Smith, and he's sixteen months old.
Coloma and I are from New York, and we moved to the Bay Area about ten years ago. When Coloma and I were talking about becoming a resource family for San Mateo County, it wasn't necessarily a hard decision.
I'm a pastor of a local church, and about seven years ago, we decided to really focus on foster children. We started looking at the data and the statistics, and we really realized that there was significantly underserved population in the Bay Area.
We were pretty set that we wanted to be a resource family, and it's been very rewarding.
Henry was with us through the entire COVID thing, and, you know, it was amazing to just watch him grow. So by the time they said, "Do you want to move from a foster family to an adoptive family?" we were like, "We can't imagine our home without him."
Until Avery came.
And then Avery came? Yeah.
We received a phone call that Henry had a biological brother, and we started fostering Avery. It was so heartwarming and beautiful to know that Avery and Henry will have each other forever. July of this year, we did Avery's adoption in San Mateo County Court.
One of the most beautiful parts is seeing the San Mateo County Social Workers network with us through his adoption and his adoption, which was five years apart, and it was a beautiful moment because they became part of our village.
Henry and Avery mean the world to us. Henry is five, and he's in pre-K, and he loves going to school. Avery loves going to daycare. They just love life.
I know we're in the Silicon Valley, and everybody's "go, go, go innovation," but at the end of the day, I'm just grateful that we get to be part of their story.
You can truly make a change in a child's life. And so it's been-- it's just been such a good experience for us.
Good morning, honorable members of the Board, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, and Ms. Rodriguez. Thank you for acknowledging National Adoption's Month. My name is Marvin Vasquez, and I am the program manager for the Adoptions Unit of the San Mateo County Children and Family Services. We would like to recognize Mr. and Mrs. Coloma and Lauren Smith. The Smith family has been dedicated to providing forever homes to our children in care. The Smith family has adopted a total of two children who are siblings on two different occasions in order to ensure that they strengthen the pathways for lasting bonds of the siblings by keeping them under one roof. It is the families like this who make a difference in our community. Please welcome us in joining Mr. and Mrs. Smith.
Welcome. Thank you so much for being here.
We weren't planning to say anything. I think the video was self-descriptive. But I think one of the greatest gifts that we've ever received is the honor and privilege to be part of their story. I think as an adoptive parent, it's not as if you're doing anyone a favor, but you're just continuing to be part of an amazing story of amazing children. And, you know, I'm just grateful for the opportunity, and that's what I can say. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would like to motion to proclaim November Adoption Awareness Month.
I'll second it. Great. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. No speakers from chambers. So Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public comment in Zoom now open for item two, Adoption Awareness Month. No hands raised, Mr. Vice President.
Okay. Do we have a roll call?
Sure.
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
And Vice President Kanapa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. All right, so we're, we're now on to item four, which is the presentation of the San Mateo County Twenty-four Seven Mobile Crisis Response Team. Supervisor Corzo and I are together to sponsor this item. Supervisor Corzo, we'd like to make some comments before we welcome, um, our speaker, Dr. Africa.
Thank you, so Supervisor Kanapa and I, uh, sorry, Vice President Kanapa and I both serve on the Subcommittee for the San Mateo County Twenty-four Seven Mobile Crisis Response Team, and that work has been led by amazing Dr. J Africa and Natasha Clara Espino, um, in terms of implementing our new countywide mobile response to mental health crisis. Uh, the community has been asking for this, and we are very excited to hear the report about how implementation is going, and, uh, we'll, we'll also get to review some impressive initial data. And so we have Dr. J Africa here to share an update on the rollout of the program and how it's going. Um, thank you so much for being here.
Dr. Africa.
Uh, good morning, honorable board supervisors, uh, county execs and, um, community. So, um, I'm here this morning to, uh, give us an update on what is happening related to the implementation of our Mobile Crisis Benefit. So just the background quickly, um, uh, in June twenty twenty-three, the Department of Healthcare Services issued a requirement for all local county behavioral health to implement a twenty-four-seven non-armable crisis as of January one twenty twenty-four. Uh, what we presented to the board in December, um, and the board, uh, Subcommittee was created, uh, with Supervisor Corzo and Kanapa as the board members. We have met four times, uh, in the last nine months, um, and we have really been working quite a bit to really get this sort of implemented. Um, just a reminder of the elements that is needed for the Mobile Crisis. There has to be a line for referral that is actually non-law enforcement or not part of nine-one-one. And in our county, that is the, uh, Star Vista, uh, Crisis Hotline. I'm just going to repeat it because it's a, a critical element, six-five-zero-five-seven-nine-zero-three-five-zero, or be able to, um, um, connect through nine-eight-eight. Um, the, uh, notice also required a two-person response, a behavioral health clinician, and a person with lived experience, meaning that a person that have, um, uh, sought care for behavioral health or a peer specialist. Um, the state also required to use a standardized dispatch tool, um, that really assesses, um, the circumstances of the individual or the families that we are referring to. And then, more importantly, we have to be able to respond within sixty minutes. Um, the Mobile Crisis Team should carry Narcan or naloxone, uh, be able to access twenty-four-seven, um, language line for people who have, uh, different language needs, be able to transport the individual that is in need to any specific service, um, and that we maintain while we are separate from law enforcement and emergency medical service, that there is a close relationship. And then the one thing that we really are excited about is the ability to follow up within twenty-four hours once we link that individual, um, to a service. So we are, we cry to be able to follow up within twenty-four, um, hours to up to ninety days. Some of the criteria that allow us to respond, um, are, um, which is again, separate from our nine-one-one colleagues or emergency medical services, no injuries requi- requiring a medical response, no weapons involved, no immediate threat of violence, um, no criminal activities known or suspected. Um, and then also they are not requesting for law enforcement or, or EMS, and then there is no other safety concern. So we rolled out Mobile Crisis in three phases. Um, and in the beginning, uh, towards the end of May, we launched one shift from three to eleven-thirty PM, Monday to Sunday. And then the second, um, a few months later, on August fifth, added two shifts in the morning. And as of August thirty-first, we are, we have fully implemented twenty-four-seven, uh, full, twenty-four-seven coverage. Because we were not able to fully implement, um, as of January one, we were on, put on corrective action, but as of Augustly, August thirty-first, we are in full implementation, and that means we are able to bill, uh, and maximize our reimbursement for all the services, um, supporting Mobile Crisis. So here is a picture of the Telecare Mobile Crisis Response steer, team. We have really been very lucky that the, the team has responded to many, over a hundred calls since we launched. And here on the right is an example of some of the, um, wallet cards that we are handing out to community members in many of our outreach, um, events. Um, Supervisor Corzo said, "We have some, uh, good preliminary data, uh, we have more work to do to analyze this data." But as of May twentieth, we served about eighty-one unduplicated, uh, duplicated clients and responded to over a hundred calls, um, who are in crisis. And if you just look at the right, um, the types of, uh, the ages of the individuals that we responded to, um, eleven to twenty, thirty-one to forty-year-old, and fifty-one to sixty-years-old, and sort of a pretty much fifty-fifty split in terms of gender. Uh, in terms of race and ethnicity, there, there is the breakdown. You will see that, that there is still, um, lots of unknown and no entry, um, for almost half of them, and we are still trying to get data on, uh, what is the challenge of getting, uh, race and ethnicity there. And in terms of insurance status, many of our individuals have medical, so these are sort of our low-income uninsured individuals also. And you are noticing also some of the private, um, or commercial health plans. Kaiser is also, uh, Kaiser clients are seeking services through our Mobile Crisis. In terms of when, um, our Mobile Crisis is activated, it's usually in the middle part of the week, towards the end, so from Wednesday to Thursday to Friday. So really just paying attention to sort of what is sort of happening during that, uh, days of the week. Um, and this next data, uh, talks about when does the call usually come? And I will just say, it's a little bit of skew, it's a little bit skewed, because as if you remember, we actually, uh, uh, phased out the implementation. So we began with, um, the three to eleven-thirty PM. So most of the calls, obviously, since we started, uh, have started towards the end of the day. So just seeing, um, what, when the calls sort of are coming in. And then in terms of the cities that we are responding to, uh, the top city that we're responding to is Redwood City, and then Pacifica, and then San Mateo, um, and then, uh, s- um, some, also some responses throughout many, many parts of the, of the county. The one thing that, uh, I am excited to, oh, talk to you about, um, hold on a minute, oh, yeah, sorry, I was so excited. Um, we really wa- you're, you brought your concerns of being able to respond within sixty minutes. The data shows that actually Mobile, um, Telecare is able to respond within thirty-three minutes. So by the time Star Vista deploys our Mobile Crisis Team, it takes about an average of thirty-three minutes to get to the scene. And then, um, how long does it take us to resolve, um, the issue? It takes about fifty-four minutes. So the entire, the total time for us from the response to resolution takes about ninety-nine minutes. So still within sort of the required, um, um, uh, time that we respond. So what are some of the outcomes that we've seen? Uh, many of the individuals that are responded to, we develop a safety plan, we transport them to a detox, to a shelter, or any, um, agency that will provide the services. Um, our Mobile Crisis Team, um, um, uh, responded by fifty, uh, doing fifty-one-fifties to seven of them. And then there were some very, very small instincts that we really needed law enforcement involvement because there was a safety concern. And then the other thing that we really are excited about, that many of these individuals, voluntarily went to a emergency department or psychiatric emergency services. So again, decreasing law enforcement involvement, um, increasing also voluntarily seeking of services. We are grateful that Telecare, um, through their technology, has been, uh, uh, able to show us some of this data. So this is just a screenshot of a real-time software that they use, um, to see where their Mobile Crisis Teams are responding, and also where the teams are. So you see the dots, um, this is a, a sample. But the one that really is exciting about this graph is on the right. You can see real-time status on what is happening, right? So if Mobile Crisis is responding, they're saying they're on their way. If they are, um, needing additional information or providing that information. So everybody, including Star Vista, can see real-time update on what is happening. So it allows us to be able to respond as appropriately. So really gets, it gives us a, a bird's eye view of what is happening, uh, with the, uh, relationship with our Mobile Crisis Teams. Um, there had been many, many questions about our relationship with, um, nine-one-one and their relationship to nine-eight-eight, and just appreciate Natasha Clara Espino, who's the Director of the PSC, really been a part, a strong partner in this process. And my understanding is that there is work that is happening in the state related to improving the coordination between nine-eight-eight and nine-one-one, um, because there have been calls that either come through nine-eight-eight and need to be triaged to nine-one-one, and vice versa. And my understanding, um, is that there is more and more work to develop the technology to enhance the coordination with the next-generation version of nine-one-one. And my belief is one of the, our colleagues from PSC, Amitra Sidney, sits on the statewide nine-eight-eight committee. Um, the other piece that I wanted to share is community and, uh, involvement. This has been really important in this process for us. While in the beginning, we really, um, brought in, um, colleagues from police, EMS, fire, County of Office Education, public safety committees, uh, the ambulance, as really to do the back-end work, to do a lot of the coordination. Uh, the, the voice of the community has been important in helping us to really understand how it's implemented. So we developed a, uh, uh, Mobile Crisis Steering Committee that has been working, uh, since March of this year to really get this implemented. So in closing, here are the implementation timelines. We started with the issued notice on June twenty twenty-three, and as of Ag- August thirty-first, have done the full launch. And just appreciate many of the people who have really led this work to get us here. Some of our next steps, uh, so the Mobile Crisis Steering Committee continues to meet, but now moved to a quarterly basis. We are continuous to work, working with Star Vista and Telecare to really streamline the coordination in our operations. We are working closely with the Department of Public Works to, um, customize our vans. So that's a picture of a, a van that we are waiting customization so that we can safely transport an individual, have supplies at the back of the vehicle, so when they need water, or socks, or food, we'd be able to provide that. As again, as I said, we are reviewing and analyzing what this data will look like, if there are any trends, any changes that we need to, um, to, to do, uh, to be better, uh, to be much more responsive and quicker, uh, provide quicker response with our Mobile Crisis. And then one of the things that we heard in the community is really how to enhance our promotion with nine, uh, with the Mobile Crisis Team and nine-eight-eight. So we're doing lots and lots of work to ensure that everybody knows of this service. Um, and here's just the, I try to be visual here, and a recent example of how we avoided law enforcement involvement. So a concerned law enforcement calls our Star Vista number, um, and then they began consulting on, um, sort of a, an issue that they were seeing in their city. And so Star Vista and the law enforcement, uh, person talked about possible opportunities. They actually then did a triage or coordination with our Mobile Crisis Response, give, share the information, and then what happened after that is our Mobile Crisis responded to the, to the individual and the home. So again, avoiding law enforcement, it was the Mobile Crisis Team that linked them to services, and then ensured that they are, um, getting the specific services that they needed. So normally, or prior to Mobile Crisis, maybe law enforcement would have responded in this situation. In this event, it was really our Mobile Crisis that responded without law enforcement. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you very much, um, for, uh, giving me the opportunity to share with you where we are with Mobile Crisis, and happy to answer questions.
Great, are there any, uh, questions or comments for, for Dr. J?
I, I have a couple questions. Um, first off, thank you for your presentation. Um, I just wanted to ask, you know, one of the things that stood out to me about this presentation and the data was that the age demographic for the highest use of MCRT so far seems to be youth eleven to twenty years old. And, um, I always think about how we can build out and continue to improve services. Uh, would you mind sharing, for this specific demographic, um, what do you think is missing, um, from the continuum of care for, for youth eleven to twenty years old?
So before I say that, um, it's just really important, prior to the Mobile Crisis, which I tried to share in the slide, we were actually required to provide a crisis hotline for young people, so which is the Youth SOS. And when we merged all these, um, services together, uh, the Youth SOS, which serve young people, was merged under the Mobile Crisis. So I think there are some opportunities for young people, a crisis stabilization, for example, um, a crisis residential. We tend to actually send young people out when this, they need this level of services. And so we are looking for opportunities using the Prop One money to see if we can build, um, some resources related to young people, um, in this county.
Thank you, and then one more. Uh, would you mind sharing, um, under what circumstances, um, it is actually very much necessary that, uh, law enforcement is involved in these kinds of calls?
So if you remember the slide where the criteria of where Mobile Crisis can respond, they're not, uh, there are no weapons, for example, there's no immediate threat of violence, um, and there are no criminal activities that are related to the response. So and, and when we respond, we want to ensure our staff are safe, our people are safe. So when we are able to determine using that screening tool, no threat of violence, no weapons, no, um, no criminal activities, then it's more appropriate for our Mobile Crisis to respond.
Thank you so much, um, and I just wanted to wrap up, um, and say that this is something that our community, the service is something our community has been asking for, for a long time. And now that we have it, our next big hurdle to overcome is making sure more and more people know that it exists and how to access it, how to use it. So I'll just close out by saying that, uh, please spread the word about this service, it is something new. There are a lot of folks that, you know, have situations, uh, happening in their households, with their families, with their friends, and they don't know what to do, and they're hesitant to ask for help because they don't want it to get escalated to law enforcement. This is the way that they can get the, the help that they need, um, through those difficult situations. So thank you, Dr. Africa.
Great, thank you very much. Really, I, it was, it's been a pleasure to, and we'll continue to work, um, together on this. I want to thank you, Natasha. Um, there's a lot of coordination and collaboration, uh, that goes with it. It's very, um, your slides made it look very simple, uh, but it's very, very complex in, in, in putting this together. I think what I'm excited about clearly is, um, the future. Um, you know, law enforcement, um, it, it's very tough in law enforcement to deal with some of these cases. They should be really, to be quite frank with you, maybe focused on, on other work. And I think as we continue to move forward in collaboration with the police chiefs, um, and others, giving them the ability and the flexibility, uh, to have us and to have these vehicles, um, I, I sort of equate it to, you referenced AMR, um, but to really to have these vehicles in, in place that if someone is in crisis, um, that they could be, you know, pushed out to that location is extremely, extremely powerful. You know, I, I think as we continue to, to move forward, you, you mentioned a little bit about the times, right? You know, the times are, you know, we, I think you said we went from fifty minutes or fifty-six minutes to, I think it's a thirty minutes.
Thirty-three minutes.
Yeah. And, and that's really, when you think about it, that's really impressive because minutes do matter. And as we continue to, to work in this, this committee, I think the one thing that we have to be acutely aware of is trying to figure out how do we lower those times? And that requires our federal government, it requires state government to really be a part of that. Because there are certain conditions, there are certain mandates that we have to uphold. And I'm sure, you know, as we move forward with this, those can potentially change. Very proud of you, Dr. Jay. I'm very proud of this work because at the end of the day, it's really about how do we make sure that people get the best care? And so extremely, extremely thankful for what you do. And want to just ask a, a final question. To you and then to, to Natasha, and you, I know you, you all have worked on this. What do you think is the big milestone, next milestone that you think that we should accomplish as we move forward? Something substantial, maybe a, a stretch goal, but something that you guys, you're, you're thinking of in terms of addressing the future of this, this program?
So I, I think you already mentioned it, is that being able to meet the client, the, the person in need wherever they are very, very quickly. One of the things that I have really learned and appreciated a lot in, in implementing this is, is really how San Mateo County tries to work together to solve big problems. So this coordination of nine-one-one, nine-eight-eight, all this crisis line, I learned a lot because it's really not easy. And so I think with the, the partnership with our PSC and our fire chiefs, our law enforcement folks are really saying, at the end of the day, the client in need needs to get the appropriate services. And there's different rules, right, for different entities? And so aligning all of that, that at the back end, we're fixing all of that and the client just gets the need, the, the, the needs met. And so for me, it really is about coordinating and knowing the guidelines and then making sure that the guidelines help, help the person in need. So for me, that's the biggest learning.
Dr. Africa, and thank you all for having us. I just really want to acknowledge Dr. Africa, my team who was behind this, the operations managers, the police chiefs in this county, the fire chiefs. It, AMR, it's all about coming together and everyone working together. And you said it perfectly. In this county, what we've done in my twenty-nine-year career is, in public safety, we always come together to do what's right. And having behavioral health by our side is huge. And I think that is the biggest hurdle. And because we do it every day in this county, it's really not that much of a hurdle. It'll be the funding, I think, moving forward. As I think is, if there's a, a means, we can make it happen.
Great. Thank you so much. Please thank our, our, our partners, our stakeholders, the police chiefs, the, the, the fire chiefs and those who've, who've worked with us. And so with that, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam, please proceed.
Public comment now open for item four for the mobile crisis response team. We have two hands raised, Pat Willard, Martin Fox. Pat, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, distinguished members of the Board of Supervisors. I am a community member of the Behavioral Health Services MCRT Steering Committee since October and founding member of Peninsula Anti-Racism Coalition. On behalf of PRRC is whom, from whom I speak, for whom I speak. The MCRT San Mateo County represents a program for which I have been advocating for half dozen years. Yet I find the program incomplete. There is today and there will always be calls to nine-one-one by people who observe someone else exhibiting a mental health issues. And that person is, has no personal relationship whatsoever and therefore will have no reason to call nine-eight-eight or Star Vista. I read the FAQ about the state mandate, which requires MCRT. It indicates law enforcement as part of a mobile continuum. While law enforcement is prohibited from being first responders, it does not prohibit nine-one-one call centers being used to dispatch clinician-led mobile teams. These are gaps that need to be filled. I ask that you close those gaps. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Two speakers, Martin Fox, followed by Jean Perry. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Good morning again, my fellow veterans, presidents. Welcome in County Attorney Mr. Niblin, Supervisors Corso Mueller, Canepon County Executive Mr. Callagie. It is past the time San Mateo Medical Centers and Mills Peninsula Hospitals' emergency rooms stop refusing to address the emergency psychiatric care needs, not just of the adult children, San Mateo County parents living with serious mental illness, but also of the unaccompanied adults with untreated psychiatric care needs who ride buses, trains, and hitchhike into San Mateo County. There could be no better time to honor the service of veterans, their families, and caregivers than by starting to dismantle California's poor excuse for mental health treatment system that continues to kill persons living with serious mental illness when it doesn't criminalize them or alienate them from their families and make them homeless. Please prevent Mills Peninsula Hospital and San Mateo General Hospital from violating federal and California emergency medical services now.
Thank you, Martin. Our last speaker, Jean Perry, please unmute and begin.
Hi, I'd like to commend all of the hard work that has gone into getting us to this point so far in the, in the continuum of a care. And I'd like to point out that, that the step after a response, or even the, the steps before the team is deployed, including the telephone ability to, to deal with situations is so, so important. And then after the team arrives, we are losing the pieces, the choices for what services can be offered to individuals. We're losing the detox center, we're losing Redwood House, we're losing things that, we're, we're going the wrong direction there. So I encourage you to keep the big picture, the continuum of care in mind of what after that successful encounter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
No other comments. Thank you. Great. There is no action on this item. This was a, a presentation. So thank you again for being with us. That'll bring us back to item three. And item three is a presentation of a proclamation acknowledging Veterans Day for twenty-twenty-four, honoring San Mateo County veterans and recognizing the work of Plus More Perfect Union. Supervisor Corso is sponsoring the resolution. Supervisor Corso.
Thank you. As we all know, yesterday was Veterans Day, a day where we recognize the invaluable contributions and sacrifices veterans have made in service to our country. I was honored to attend our county's Veterans Luncheon last week, as well as two Veterans Day ceremonies yesterday, where I had the chance to hear stories of several veterans about their service and their experiences returning home. It reminded me of how many service members here in our community are continuing their service here. I especially want to recognize three of my favorite veterans who I'm honored to know and be in community with. And that is Supervisor Warren Slocum, who served in the Army, County Attorney John Niblin, who also served in the Army, and Justin Terry, who served in the Marine Corps. I want to personally thank you three for your service. I'd also like to share some hard truths, but I think these are necessary truths when we think about how we actually can and must support veterans. So in the midst of our historic homelessness crisis, I want to acknowledge that veterans experience homelessness in our country and in our community at a disproportionate rate. While veterans make up less than ten percent of the population, thirteen percent of the unhoused population is made up of veterans, and twenty-one-fifth of all men who are unhoused are veterans. Veterans experience mental health challenges disproportionately compared to the general population. And it is our moral obligation as a society to ensure that those who serve our country do not have to live on the streets and have access to the quality care they deserve. I want to recognize the many individuals and organizations in our community who are both working to ensure that our veterans get the support they deserve and those who are building community, a community that many veterans feel that they lose after they come home. Today, we have the honor of being joined by Doug Seach of A More Perfect Union, a veteran-led volunteer organization working to build community and provide meaningful volunteer opportunities. And I'll let Doug say, I'll invite Doug to say a few words about the work that A More Perfect Union does here in our county and throughout the entire country.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Supervisor Corso, thank you. And thanks for having today the San Vicatano County Leadership Board and some of the other veterans that I've talked to. A pleasure to be with you. Supervisor Corso, I can just give a, a minute or two overview on the organization? Probably thirty seconds to a minute on how we'd love to partner with the county? And then I can turn over any questions. Does that work for everyone?
Yes, we'd love to hear about the organization. Yes.
Yeah, perfect. So again, thanks again for having me on. I'm a, a member of the community in San Mateo. I live in Belmont. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, served twenty years as an F-18 pilot, and now I work in tech. One of the things that I do is volunteer with an organization called More Perfect Union. Quick overview, we're a veteran-started organization, but we're not solely veteran, we're just members of the community. So very heavily, very heavy veteran presence. Our mission is to unite the country and strengthen communities through social connection, service, and civic engagement. So we're an apolitical organization. One of the primary things we want to do is try to tackle political divisiveness in the country and bring people together and show communities that even though we have differences, we can still come together, get up a conversation about those differences, and we can work to identify common things that we can do in the community to improve it. Couple of ways that we do that is through local coffee clubs, where we meet once a month to talk and get new members. We also discuss, have civic discussions, and then we volunteer in the community. And we've done that a number of times already with Second Harvest, Raft, which supports teachers, and a few other organizations as, as well. I've talked to Supervisor Corso and a few members of the county board to look for partnership opportunities. And I think there's a number of interesting ways that we can partner. So just very quickly, a couple of ideas is, one, there's a loneliness epidemic in the, in the county that I think is an interesting problem that we can potentially solve. And there's a lot of synergies between what we do and that. Two, we mentioned the homelessness crisis and veterans. We look for opportunities to bring volunteers together and do good in the community. So that could be an idea of something that we motivate and work together on to address. But three, just strengthen the bonds of the community. I think naturally lends to what the county commission tries to do. And a couple of ways we'd like to do that is specifically look to partner an opportunity to bring people together to, to talk and identify common threads and then potentially partner on something we could volunteer for to make the community better. And I got another community has a lot of, or the county has a lot of ideas there as well. So I'll pause there. That's a little about the organization, what we do, and how I think we can have a lot of great synergy with San Mateo County. Anything to add or questions for me?
Thank you so much, Doug. I think that was perfect unless my fellow supervisors have any questions. Okay, with that, I'd love to actually hand it over to County Attorney John Niblin, our supervisor, President Slocum, if they want to add anything.
Well, I, I think I'll defer to the supervisor, of course. That's, I think, the wise thing for me to do, and maybe I'll have a few comments after that.
Thank you, Mr. Niblin. And thank you Supervisor Corso for bringing this proclamation for Veterans Day forward. Supervisor Corso knows perhaps better than most how much this proclamation means to me as a Vietnam veteran. I sincerely appreciate her attending the few Veterans Day events and listening to the stories of veterans. Listening to those stories is very important. Obviously, I'm very proud of the work that, or the support that the county gives to our veterans. And since two thousand and fourteen, three hundred and nineteen new veterans' affordable housing units came online and were supported by the county. And an additional eighty-four affordable units gave preference to our veterans. Just one last statistic, from September twenty-twenty-three to September twenty-four, our Veterans Service Office has worked tirelessly to provide, excuse me, services to our veterans, including over two thousand five hundred and fifty-six veterans and veteran spouses have been assisted, which is a sixteen percent increase year over year. That's two thousand five hundred and fifty-six families supported. And over nine hundred and eighty-one formal claims with the VA were filed on behalf of our veterans, resulting in over four million two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in retroactive payments to those veterans, which is here again, a thirty percent increase year over year. And finally, a five hundred and forty-two thousand in monthly assistance given out. So thank you to the outstanding Veterans Service Office and for all your work on behalf of veterans and their families. I know that each one of them are most appreciative. Just a little, maybe this is funny, maybe it's not. I think sometimes we say there are twenty thousand veterans in San Mateo County. I've heard it was up to thirty thousand veterans in San Mateo County. And this morning, I actually used ChatGPT, Claude, and Perplexity to ask how many veterans there were in San Mateo County. And the, the numbers ranged from twenty thousand to forty thousand. So I don't know if there's a way to pin that more precisely down, but I think that would be a worthwhile statistic to have an accurate number on the count. Okay, Mr. Niblin, I'll kick it off to you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I, I really, really appreciate, you know, the many years of championing of veterans' issues that this board and Supervisor Slocum in particular, Supervisor Corso today has demonstrated for, for veterans and veterans' families. And for me, you know, Veterans Day is kind of a family affair. You know, my grandfather and my great uncle both served in World War II in the Army, in the Army Air Corps. And my dad and my, both my uncle served in, in Vietnam or in the Vietnam era. My dad was a chaplain in Vietnam and my uncle was a, a Marine in Vietnam. And I had a, an uncle who was a sailor in the Mediterranean during the Vietnam era. And myself and two of my siblings also have served in the military. So kind of a family business, I guess, to some extent, having had the privilege to, to serve. And, you know, just reflecting on how blessed, I guess, we veterans here in San Mateo County are. I'll start with those of us who've worked for the, for the county, you know, the championing that the, the board has done for veteran employees or employees who've served on, in the reserves or in the National Guard and been called up to, to serve. The board has always been just a great champion and provider for those who've served both in the county and in the service. And just knowing that we have the support of the board when we go overseas or we go somewhere to, to, to serve the, the nation. So that's been an extremely valuable thing and an extremely comforting thing for even myself. And I've called up a, a couple of different times during my, my service here, and I always knew that I had support back home. And I think similarly, just we are blessed to, to have the work of our Veterans Commission, the Veterans Service Office, all the amazing work that the VSO does, and that constellation of veteran service organizations that exist out there to, to take up the interests of veterans and their families. So again, it's just an amazingly remarkable support system that we have here for veterans. Always more that we can do, always ways that we can improve. But just an amazing, again, sort of constellation of, of support for veterans and their families. Just reflecting on my own service and the, the various opportunities I've had to, to do different things in, in uniform. And I was reflecting on, I, I think my most, well, sort of the highest honor I had. I was, I served in Iraq for a year. And I think the thing that brought me the greatest joy and of which I'm the most proud is preparing and working with a, a number of soldiers from, you know, all over the world. It turns out, you know, that most, maybe people know this, maybe don't, a really significant portion of the folks who serve in the military were born overseas, immigrants. And I had the opportunity to work with a number of immigrants from places like the Philippines, Peru, Mexico, Guatemala, El Salvador, and help them to naturalize or prepare their naturalization documents. And to see these folks naturalize back in 2005 in Baghdad, it was a moving thing for me. And I just want folks to remember when we talk about veterans or when we talk about servicemembers, we're, you know, we're talking about folks who were born here. We're talking about folks who chose to become part of our experiment here and who chose to put on the uniforms. So I really am grateful for the marking of Veterans Day and for Supervisor Corzo. You're giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much. And I also want to invite Donna Valencourt, Chair of our Veterans Commission, to not just receive the proclamation, but share a few work words if she'd like. And we'll hear from you a lot more in the next item as well.
Yes. I just feel all the love today from all of you. So appreciative. I'm going to spend the time really when I present, but I just, on behalf of the county's, now, what I've heard Supervisor Slocum, it's twenty-seven thousand veterans. We are so grateful for your commitment and continued support for our veterans and their families in San Mateo County.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to motion to proclaim and acknowledge Veterans Day 2024 honoring San Mateo County veterans.
Second.
Second, okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. All speakers from chambers, so Madam Clark, please proceed.
Please raise your hand for public comment on Zoom for Veterans Day and honoring the work of A More Perfect Union. No hands raised, Mr. Vice President. Oh, actually, and now we did receive a new hand as I said that, for Martin Fox. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Morning, my fellow veterans, President Slocum, County Attorney Mr. Niblin. As well as our supervisors, thank you for your service to the county. I'm the third-generation veteran. My grandfather was with General Pershing in France on the original Veterans Day. My father served in World War II and got as far as Okinawa before the Japanese surrendered. I had an uncle who served in Korea, a place where I happened to have spent some time. There could be no better time to honor the service of veterans and their families by starting to dismantle California's poor excuse for mental health treatment system that continues to kill persons living with serious mental illness when it doesn't criminalize them or alienate them first. Please make the funding disability rights California the law foundation in Silicon Valley, atop county federal legislative priority. The repeal of the Lynam impeachment short act, atop county state legislative priority. And stop those mills from ins, and San Mateo County General Hospital from their continued violations of the Federal and State Emergency Medical Services Act. Thank you.
No further hands, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now move to item five.
Sorry, can I just add one thing?
Sure.
I just also want to recognize Al Banfield, who is a Vietnam veteran as well. And we didn't get the picture with you, but we want to recognize you. Thank you so much for being here.
All right. We'll now move to item five, a presentation of the annual reports by the San Mateo County Veterans Commission. President Slocum as board liaison to the San Mateo County Veterans Commission will introduce this item. Supervisor Slocum.
Thank you, Mr. Vice, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Some of you might be curious of how the Veterans Commission actually came into existence. And the short story is that back in 1967, yes, I know, a long time ago, when I returned from Vietnam, the country really didn't welcome returning soldiers from that conflict with open arms. In fact, there were a lot of tensions and hostilities. But anyway, through those experiences, I was determined that if I ever had the opportunity or the chance to help veterans, that I would. So fast forward many years later, and I was elected a county supervisor. I still had that idea of how to help, and it came to me, maybe we should form a commission and serve those twenty thousand, twenty-seven thousand veterans within our borders. And so the Veterans Commission was born, thankfully. The board approved that matter, and in 2015, the commission actually was created and started work. And I, I still remember the days when the late Supervisor Horsley, Donna Valencourt, who used to be the HR Director and who's now the Chair of the Veterans Commission, interviewed, I think we had over a hundred applicants who wanted to serve on this new commission. We interviewed each and every one of those folks. And I can just tell you, it was inspirational, and we all were so moved and inspired by their individual stories. The Veterans Commission, as we've heard, does amazing, excuse me, work. And has since its creation, and many other counties, looked to our Veterans Service Office and the commission led by Ed Kirkson, who does such meaningful work aimed at helping our veterans and our families, as I mentioned earlier. So with that, by way of background, you now know how the Veterans Commission came into existence. It's been an honor to serve with them. They're one of the groups that I will miss in January when I leave county service. And so let me call on Donna Valencourt, the current Chair of the commission, to share with us all and the public the commission's annual report. Donna?
Thank you Supervisor Slocum, Vice President Canepa, Honorable Members of the Board, County Manager Kellye, Assistant County Manager, I see, I say manager because I haven't been in the county, Executive, my apologies, and John Niblin, fellow Army veteran. I'm so pleased to be here this morning, the day after Veterans Day, to present to you the annual report for our commission. Very simply, our vision is that San Mateo County is a place where veterans and their families thrive. Our mission is to promote public awareness, advocacy, programs, and policies that improve the lives of veterans in our county. And I have to tell you, like, Al is in the room along with the other commissioners, I love working with them. We have business owners, educators, lawyers, doctors, artists, and they are all in the commission with a heart of service there to help our veterans. So I couldn't, I mean, it's just a joy for me to be part of this commission. We updated our strategic plan about eighteen months ago, and we're really focused on three goals. One is how do we increase our understanding of the needs of the veterans in our community? And how do we ensure that veterans know about the services available to them? With the expansion of the PACT Act, where a lot of presumptive conditions became available for healthcare, we wanted to make sure that the veterans, they could have been denied five years ago or ten years ago. But with the passage of the PACT Act, they, in many cases, could receive the healthcare that they needed. And then we want to continue to advocate to both you, board, and to community leaders on policies and programs that support our veterans. So in terms of understanding needs, we started by looking at what do we need to know more about? So veterans homelessness, affordable housing, suicide prevention, healthcare, even student veteran health. And we asked people from across the county to come and educate our commission in these areas. I want to say thank you to the county departments, Housing and Housing Authority, to our Office of Homelessness, to Behavioral Health. They all came in to talk about, these are the services that we provide, these are the gaps, et cetera. We also formed some partnerships, Palo Alto VA Health, where we did some suicide prevention training for the community. And we meet monthly with all the regional chairs and co-chairs of commissions, again, from Santa Cruz to Stanislaus to Costa Alameda, San Francisco, to learn about what are we doing? Are there areas that we can collaborate and share resources? So after we had the folks come and present to us, we realized, one of the things we were, became aware of is that a lot of them didn't understand other services available to veterans. So there were gaps in their knowledge about how they could get additional help for veterans. So we decided to host our first Veteran Provider Network. And it was a huge success. We had more than a hundred and fifty attendees and more than sixty-seven organizations that are providing services to veterans in our county. Supervisor Slocum, thank you for sponsoring the event and for speaking at it. During that time, people strengthened partnerships. Many of them, many of our new VA social workers are, they're new, and they weren't aware of the services, like how to connect our veterans to services. So this provided an opportunity to learn more and to look at, are there ways we can coordinate resources and collaborate to meet the needs of our veterans? We supported the stand-down event for the CBSO, and I give them all credit. We're so fortunate that they managed this wonderful event. We had over a hundred and seventy-eight attendees, sixty providers, thirty-five access legal services to get certain convictions expunged. And I want to say thank you to Judge Wendler, who he and his team were on site. And also a hundred and fifteen new people, veterans, were enrolled in VA healthcare. They were just thrilled. VA was thrilled about that. In terms of increasing awareness of services, we get asked to, we've been going to a lot of community events. This is just a small list of them, but like National Night Out, where veterans are going to be present, and we can talk about the commission and their benefits. We've been asked to be speakers at various events, most recently yesterday at the American Legion Post 105. And thank you Supervisor Corzo for being there. We really appreciate it. Next is advocacy and awareness. So we work with Connie to look at how we can take positions on pending legislation. We had, we advocated for the Gateway Project at Millbury Station. They had set aside units for veterans. But when they opened them up, they did not get many takers. And so we wanted to look at, why is that? And can we create a best practice on giving these developers, here's the way you reach veterans in our county in order to make them aware of these opportunities? Also, we had heard from our Colma Veterans Village that they had no public transportation in their area. The bus stop was dangerous for them to cross, et cetera. And so we talked to Warren Supervisor Slocum, who partnered with Supervisor Canepa and the city of South San Francisco. They worked their magic, and they created a shuttle for the veterans of the village. So we're really, Veterans Village, so very grateful for that. And finally, you've heard already a lot about the Ninth Annual Veterans Recognition. It was a wonderful event. So I'm not going to go over all of the honorees, but I do want to thank Mr. Callagie for bringing this amazing person to our attention, Bob Hoover, who was just inspirational, as well as to Supervisor Moller for nominating Congressman Anna Eshu. And, you know, again, she has been such a champion for not only active military and veterans her whole career. What Supervisor Slocum didn't talk about is that he was honored on Friday with a lifetime achievement award. We call him the Godfather of our commission, and we are so grateful for his unwavering support constantly. We also did a little special recognition for Marcy Dragon, Senior Legislature Chief, Ledge Aid, who, this event is her heart, and she puts so much time in making every detail just perfect. So in terms of our programs and priorities for next year, some of the same things. One of the additions is that we learned from the provider event, we really need to have a comprehensive database of all the services available to veterans. So we're looking at creating that in cooperation with the CBSO. And now I just need to say some thank yous. To President Slocum for your vision to create the commission, to your board, for your commitment and support. To Marcy, where's Marcy? We're just so grateful for everything you do. We love you. To Ed Kirkson and the CBSO team, we are so fortunate to have one of the most dedicated, driven, and effective CBSOs in the state of California, right here in San Mateo County. I want to thank John Niblin and his team for sage legal advice from time to time, keeping us on the straight and narrow. Thank you to Claire Cunningham, Director of HSA, Selena, and the HSA team for all their support. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Supervisor Slocum, President Slocum?
No questions here. Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Thank you, Mr. Vice President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam Clark, please proceed.
Please click raise hand to comment for item five, the annual report by the Veterans Commission. No hands raised, Mr. Vice President.
Great. Seeing that there are no comments, this is a presentation. Thank you, Donna, for all you've done and will continue to do. Doesn't require board action. And so with that, I want to thank you again, and Commissioners and President Slocum. So thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly add that, just want Supervisor Slocum to hear it from us that we recognize and will continue to honor the legacy that he started in supporting veterans in our county. Thank you, President Slocum.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. So we have matters set for a specified time. We'll now move to matters set for a specified time. And we'll start with item six, Public Works Acting as Governing Body. Governing Board of the Fair Oaks Sewer Maintenance District conduct a public hearing regarding annexation of property to the Fair Oaks Sewer Maintenance District, lands of Peterman Trust. Before we get to the public hearing, we'll have a report from our Public Works Director, Ann Stillman, who provides us with a presentation regarding this item. Good morning, Ms. Stillman.
Good morning. Good morning, Vice President Canepa, Honorable Members of the Board, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Rodriguez, and Mr. Niblin. This item is for the hearing to consider the annexation of the property located at 145 Lynn Way in the town of Woodside to the Fair Oaks Sewer Maintenance District, a county governed sewer district. The agreement between the Fair Oaks Sewer Maintenance District and the town of Woodside provides for the transmission and disposal of wastewater from specific properties in the town and within the town's Redwood Creek Main Trunk Sewer and Glenn's Collection System Assessment District through district's facilities. The property being considered today for annexation is within the corporate limits of the town and within the town's assessment district boundaries. The property owner has requested that the property be annexed to the district, and the town has executed a resolution consenting to the proposed annexation. A hearing to consider the annexation of the properties into the district is required pursuant to the Streets and Highways Code, the district's enabling legislation. The board previously adopted a resolution on October eighth of this year setting the hearing for this board meeting. The property owner has paid or will pay all necessary fees for annexation. Staff recommends approval of this annexation. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Great. Are there any questions for Director Stillman? Now that we've heard from the director with unanimous consent, I'm going to open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I will ask the clerk to take any public comment regarding this item. I will ask the clerk to take any public comment regarding this item.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, no speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
With public hearing for item six, please click raise hand on the annexation of property to the Fair Oaks Sewer Maintenance District for lands of Peterman Trust in Woodside. Final call, public comment, item six. No hands raised, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, we've had the opportunity for public comment. With unanimous consent, we will close the public hearing. Any further questions or discussions from the Supervisors? Supervisor Slocum?
No, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt a resolution for item six?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Sure, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Wonderful, we're on to item seven, Acting as the Governing Board of the Oak Knoll Sewer Maintenance District. We're going to conduct a hearing regarding annexation of property to the Oak Knoll Sewer Maintenance District, lands of Flynn Family Trust. Again, before we get to the public hearing, we'll hear from our Public Works Director, Anne Stillman. Anne?
Thank you, good morning again, Vice President Canepa, Honorable Members of the Board, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Rodriguez, and Mr. Nivlin. This item is for a hearing in connection with the proposed annexation of 23 Don Court to the Oak Knoll Sewer Maintenance District, a county governed sewer district. The district entered into an agreement with the city of Redwood City that allows for transport and treatment of sewage from the district. The agreement also allows the district to provide sewer service to properties that are adjacent to district-owned and operated facilities with consent of the city. The property considered for annexation is adjacent to district-owned and operated facilities. The property owners have requested that the property be annexed to the district, and the city has consented to the annexation by adopting a resolution to that effect. A hearing to consider the annexation of the property into the district is required pursuant to the Health and Safety Code, the enabling legislation for this district. The board previously adopted a resolution on October 8th, setting today as the public hearing for this board meeting. The property owner has paid and will pay all fees necessary for the annexation. Staff recommends approval of this annexation. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions.
Great, do we have any questions for Ms. Stillman? Seeing none, with unanimous consent, I'd like to open the public hearing. Okay. Mr. Clerk, do we have a public comment or remote comment?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, no speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public hearing open for item seven, for annexation of property to the Oak Knoll Sewer Maintenance District, lands of Flynn Family Trust in Redwood City. Please click raise hand to comment. Final call, public comment, item seven. No hands raised, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, great. With that, are there any additional comments with that, with unanimous consent? I'll close the public hearing. Seeing that there are no questions for discussions from the Supervisors, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution for item seven?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Sure, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. That brings us to item eight. It's the introduction of an ordinance amending section 5.124.020, adding a new section 5.124.30. Ms. Wardell?
All right, good morning, Vice President Canepa, Honorable Board Members, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Callagie, and Mr. Nivlin. I'm Corinne Whittle, here today as the Sealer of Ways and Measures for the county. Today I come before you to consider amendments to the Device Registration Fee Ordinance, Chapter 5.124. The county board of Supervisors are authorized under the Business and Professions Code to charge an annual registration fee not to exceed the cost of inspecting or testing the devices. Last year, AB 1304 was signed into law, raising the maximum allowable device registration fees. In the county, we have approximately 40,000 commercial devices, and our fees cover about 58% of the cost to do the inspections. In 2016 was the last time our fee schedule was adopted, and at that point, it was, it's $100 per location and then plus a device fee. So the proposed fee schedule will now go to $120 per location and additional cost per device. Under the current registration fees, we're collecting about 58% of the cost, but with the proposed amendments, we would collect 81%. Additionally, additional modifications to the ordinance is that we are proposing to lower the late penalty fee from 100% to 50%. And we're also proposing to waive the location fee for scales used at non-fixed locations. So these are scales such as at farmers' markets or at fisherman, fisherman scales at Pillar Point Harbor. Additionally, we'd like to add section 5.124.030 to the ordinance, so that we are able to get cost recovery for inspection of water meters that will be installed outside of the county. And we spend approximately 200 hours a year doing these inspections. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? I don't see any questions. With that, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, no speakers for this item, item number eight. So Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public comment now open for item number eight, for this introduction of ordinance. Please click raise hand to comment. No hands, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to introduce the ordinance and to waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
So, a second.
Second, okay. Roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Slocum? Supervisor Slocum? He's currently absent.
You might be muted, one moment.
Sure, thank you.
He's appear absent. I don't see him on the screen, though.
Thank you. And then Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes with Supervisor Slocum being absent.
Great, thank you so much. Next is item nine, introduction of an ordinance to amend the county ordinance code as it pertains to all electric buildings and the county energy code to acquire higher energy efficiency targets and waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety. Mr. Monowitz?
Good morning, Vice President Canepa, Honorable Supervisors, Mr. Callagie, Ms. Rodriguez, and Mr. Nivlin. My name's Steve Monowitz, I'm the Director of the Planning and Building Department, and I'm here with our building official and Deputy Director, Christopher Raglin. As the Supervisors may know, my department is adept at processing building permits for new construction projects, but we've needed some help in figuring out how to do that in a way that would address the county's emission reduction strategies. And I'm so pleased to have the assistance of the Department of Sustainability in working on this. So I'd like to turn the presentation over to the Director of Sustainability, Carolyn Blady, to make the presentation.
Thank you, Steve. Good morning, Vice President Canepa, Honorable Members of the Board, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Nivlin, Ms. Rodriguez. My name's Carolyn Blady, I'm the Director of the Sustainability Department, and I'm here to present for your consideration, the Energy Performance Reach Code Ordinance for new construction for unincorporated San Mateo County. Let me begin with a quick overview of reach codes. Reach codes are amendments to Title 24 of the California Building Code that local governments adopt to advance climate goals by going beyond or reaching beyond the state's minimum standards. So for example, requiring the energy performance of a building to be higher than the current state standard. This board has shown climate action leadership through major initiatives such as launching Peninsula Clean Energy in 2016, adopting the Community Climate Action Plan in 2022, and adopting reach codes for the 2019 and 2022 state building code cycles. Because Peninsula Clean Energy is supplying clean energy to all of San Mateo County, a key strategy to achieving the needed emission reductions is to electrify buildings and to transition away from natural gas. Adopting this reach code before you today will encourage this transition and reduce harmful greenhouse gas emissions that are impacting our communities today with wildfire, extreme precipitation, and sea level rise. Additionally, this will position the county as a leader ahead of upcoming regional and state policies for electric appliances such as Bay Area Air Quality Management District's ban on sale of nitrogen oxide emitting gas appliances like hot water heaters, beginning in 2027. Encouraging electric appliance installations over gas will support the implementation of our Community Climate Action Plan commitments, and can reduce costs for property owners as all-electric new construction for buildings, new construction for new buildings are often less expensive to build and maintain compared to mixed-fuel buildings. Finally, this reach code aligns with Peninsula Clean Energy's policy recommendation for San Mateo County jurisdictions. State energy codes are updated on a regular cycle. You'll see the timeline above the dotted line. Below the line, you'll see the county's history of reach codes. San Mateo County adopted reach codes in the last two building code cycles of 2019 and 2022, which required all-electric new construction with exemptions for certain building types. In 2024, a lawsuit against the city of Berkeley impacted the ability of jurisdictions to include all-electric provisions in their reach codes. A decision was made by the county attorney and the Planning and Sustainability Departments to pause enforcement of some elements of the 2022 reach code. The ordinance that we're bringing forward today removes the all-electric provision to ensure compliance with the Berkeley ruling, and it requires higher energy efficiency targets. More specifically, it requires implementation of the provisions of the 2025 California Energy Code as a reach code roughly one year early ahead of the state code cycle, which will allow us to keep moving forward to meet the board's greenhouse gas emission reduction targets. The reach code before you today applies to residential and non-residential new construction in the unincorporated areas. So let me shift to implementation. The state energy code has two compliance pathways for the design and construction of new homes and commercial buildings. One is referred to as the prescriptive pathway, which is in essence, a checklist of minimum requirements that buildings must meet. There are hundreds of subsections outlining these requirements, covering everything from window size and placement to lighting requirements to roofing materials. The second option is the performance pathway, which is assessed by calculating whether the overall energy performance meets the required standard. This provides more flexibility of choice. The ordinance we're bringing forward increases the energy efficiency target of the performance pathway as previously described. The energy performance pathway permits applicants to work with an energy analyst to ensure the building meets the energy performance standard. Examples of the elements included in the calculation are larger appliances such as water heaters and space heating and cooling systems, as well as insulation, solar, and battery storage. Smaller gas appliances, including stoves, fireplaces, and clothes dryers are not included, so they can be installed without impacting the energy performance calculation of the building. The energy performance pathway gives property owners flexibility. I'll share some examples. The easiest and most cost-effective way to meet the standard is shown on the left, using all-electric larger appliances, HVAC and water heating, and a minimal amount of insulation and solar. No battery storage would be needed. If property owners want to install larger gas appliances, HVAC and water heating, they'll need to offset those increasing, by increasing efficiency or adding solar and battery storage to get to the energy performance standard, as you see on the far right. And there are many variations in between, these are just examples. The reach code doesn't include any exemptions, but permit applicants have more flexibility on what to install to meet the energy standard, more flexibility than the previous reach code we had in place. Because the process of working with an energy analyst is established and already set for the state's performance pathway, property owners would not be expected to incur additional costs. And research shows that the code compliant, all-electric new construction to be both feasible and cost-effective. Additionally, building all-electric can be less expensive because gas infrastructure isn't needed, which drives down upfront cost. Since the county's first all-electric reach code in 2019, planning and building staff have seen strong understanding among permit applicants about the trend towards clean energy appliances. If the proposed reach code is adopted, staff will host information sessions to ensure applicants fully understand this reach code and the differences from the past versions. The outreach effort will focus on developers and contractors who work on behalf of property owners, and information will be made available to permit applicants as well. The Sustainability Department is also leading a regional communications campaign in partnership with San Mateo County jurisdictions to increase awareness about the benefits of transitioning to electric appliances and to address common misconceptions. So in summary, we propose amending sections 10.44.080 and .090 of the Chapter 10.44 Green Building Code of the San Mateo County Ordinance Code to remove the sections, as you see referenced on the slide, and repealing Chapter 10.40 Energy Code of the San Mateo County Ordinance Code and replacing it with a new chapter 10.40, as you see on the slide. And thank you, and we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. So I actually, so when I was in Menlo Park, I supported reach codes, urban environment. So, but now I represent an area that does not have consistent electricity. When we met with PG&E, they indicated it was the worst grid that they had in the Bay Area for the San Mateo County coast. And so what I want to know is, I have a number of seniors and folks living in that area. Are you going to be able, if a person decides that they want to keep their water heater on something other than electric, will they be able to meet these standards that are set forth in this code?
So the standards that we're bringing forward are going in place one year early, so this will be by state law in effect a year from now. So just wanted to share that. And our intention is to do outreach and to look at innovative ways that we can support the implementation of the code. Certainly, you know, working with PG&E and addressing grid stability is something that is very important, and Peninsula Clean Energy will be looking to them to do some of that. There is, in this new code, battery storage capability and solar, so we'd also be looking to help, you know, innovate with pilot programs to see how we can address this issue.
Okay, I appreciate all of that, but that didn't answer my question. So maybe Steve, you can answer it. What I want to know is, for a person living in the unincorporated areas, can they decide to keep their water heater or put in a water heater and meet these, meet the, meet the formula?
Yes, excuse me, the, the reach code provisions apply to new construction, so if you're building a new home, you're going to need to meet these performance criteria, but replacement of a water heater would not trigger the need for these performance standards. So you'll be able to replace existing appliances life for life.
Okay, but if I'm building a new home, so a new home is sometimes, okay, if I have a lot and I'm, and I'm tear down, I think I tear down all the walls instead of leave one up, that's a new home, right?
Correct.
Okay, if I do that right now, what I want to know is, if I put, decide that I'm going to put in a gas-powered water heater, under this code, can I meet the minimum threshold requirements?
Yes, you'll, you can still use a gas-water heater, but you'll need to make up for the emissions associated with that by increasing the efficiency of your home through, for example, additional insulation. So we don't prohibit any particular type of device, but you have to meet a performance criteria that keeps your emissions below a certain threshold. So if you do choose to install a gas-water heater, then you'll need to offset that through your, the other choices that you make in your new home.
Okay, and that's fine. I just wanted to make sure, because right now I have folks who are sometimes choosing to burn wood on a stove. who are sometimes choosing to burn wood on a stove to heat water. Because they, so I just want to make sure that we have that flexibility for people's health and safety. Thank you.
Energy, on that one slide, there's those two options, to go all-electric or without mixed fuel. So it's really looking at the overall performance of the building.
Thank you.
Could you just clarify when this goes into effect?
So this would, if we move forward today, we would bring this forward again for the second reading next week. Yeah, next week. And then it has to go off to California Energy Commission for approval. So the ordinance would go into effect in 30 days, but we would not actually implement until we actually have the approval, and then we do the public outreach.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Have we done an inventory on potential emissions? And what the future may look like with this implementation?
We're actually redoing our emissions inventories right now. We haven't done those for a few years. If we build roughly at the rate that we build last calendar, if we move forward with this, that will impact probably around 50 residential buildings, and then maybe five to 10 commercial buildings. So that will move us forward towards that emissions reduction goal of electrifying. And it's, electrification is so key, which is why we're focusing on EVs and the buildings, because the power is so clean in the county. That, those are really two of the strategies we need to implement broadly to reduce our emissions and meet our targets.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam Quick, please proceed.
Public comment on Zoom now open for item number nine for an introduction of ordinance to the Building Code amendments. No hands raised, Mr. Vice President.
Great, Supervisor Pine, would you like to introduce this ordinance? I'm moving forward, the ordinance. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. My Supervisor Mueller, and roll call, please.
Sure. Thank you, Supervisor Pine.
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Slocum.
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you for our readings approved.
Thank you very much. With that, we now go to item 10 to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a Measure K agreement with the Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District, One Shoreline, to provide funding for flood and sea level rise resiliency projects for the term July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028, in the amount not to exceed $2.25 million. Again, we'll hear from Ms. Blady.
Good morning again. Vice President Canepa, Honorable Members of the Board, Mr. Caligi, Mr. Niblin, Ms. Rodriguez. My name's Carolyn Blady, Director of the Sustainability Department. I'm here to open the presentation for the Measure K agreement with the Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District, also known as One Shoreline, for flood and sea level rise resiliency projects. Len Maderman, CEO of One Shoreline, will be giving a brief presentation, and I'd like to welcome Len to come to the podium.
Okay, thank you very much, Carolyn, and good morning, members of the board, Supervisors. I want to start off by thanking Supervisors Pine and Mueller for their service on our board, and all the other Supervisors for their interest in addressing both our short-term and long-term challenges associated with climate change. I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to Supervisor Slocum and County Attorney Niblin for their comments earlier regarding the veterans. I am wearing my dog, my dad's dog tag from when he went to service 80 years ago and fought in the Battle of the Bulge. And some of the comments that I heard today were just really, really nice to hear and special, and I appreciate them. And I don't usually talk about that service, but it's nice to hear it today, so thank you. Okay, back to One Shoreline. So I'll go through introduction to One Shoreline and our work, and how that relates to this Measure K agreement. So 65 years ago, San Mateo County Flood Control District, which was a special district or a district of San Mateo County itself, was established at that time, at the time that San Mateo County started looking into its climate issues along with the cities. The Flood Control District collected property taxes and built projects in about 10% of our county. Recent studies, some of which are shown here, some of which were done by San Mateo County, showed that we have a common vulnerability to most climate issues and a unique sea level rise-related vulnerability regarding transportation, the number of residential buildings, and including low-income housing, coastal erosion, the cost of resilience, number of contaminated sites, property value, basically almost any important metric that you can measure. We have a unique vulnerability in California. Thus, through the leadership locally, Supervisor Pine, as well as many others, five years ago, state legislation passed to create One Shoreline. And we have taken on the assets and the responsibilities of the San Mateo County Flood Control District. And we are, we take kind of a holistic approach in how we view these projects cross-jurisdictional. So we work county-wide with all the cities, cross-sector, meaning we work with obviously local governments, but also with NGOs and with the private sector, and cross-disciplinary. So we view housing and transportation and the environment and utilities. All of these relate to climate concerns and future threats. So the priorities I'll talk about that we're working on relate to the Measure K agreement that's before you today. So the first priority is regarding planning land use, private development, and public infrastructure with future conditions in mind. When One Shoreline started in 2020 as a long-term resiliency agency, we also saw right away that the approvals and permits granted to private development and public infrastructure was not resilient to current or future climate conditions. Thus, in 2023, the One Shoreline Board adopted what we call Planning Policy Guidance for Cities and the County, so private projects are cited and designed to function for their intended lifespan, which includes a rapidly changing climate. The policies of many local agencies and jurisdictions don't require that at present. But five cities have incorporated aspects of our Planning Policy Guidance into their key land use documents, which is great, and seven more are anticipated to do so through the San Mateo County Lead Safety Element Update. The end game of this effort is what we show on the screen here. An example of it is a development agreement from the city of Burlingame, between the city of Burlingame and a private developer near the shoreline, requiring that the developer build FEMA-certified shoreline infrastructure and give the city and One Shoreline an easement to elevate it in the future if needed. Now, One Shoreline is focused on public infrastructure. And we're starting off with stormwater systems and roadways and wastewater treatment plants and water recycling systems. And we'll in the future turn our attention to parks and utilities so that those are built with sustainability in mind. Not only can improperly-designed waterside development and infrastructure be vulnerable for itself, for what's being proposed, but it also reduces opportunities to build resilience, particularly resilience incorporating nature for the surrounding community. This planning work relates to One Shoreline's original mandate to work in long-term resilience. So I'll walk through quickly some of the selected examples by Supervisor District of this long-term resilience effort. Starting with District 1, the Purple Stars include a One Shoreline project to build along the shoreline of Burlingame and Millbrae resilience. And it provides a great opportunity to work with private developments and public infrastructure with the regional resilience project filling the gaps. These gaps extend to neighboring communities. And you see a picture there of just in District 2 in the city of San Mateo, the shoreline connected into Burlingame during a high tide. And there's a, this is a new shoreline development, and obviously, there's a need for building it up further in regards to sea level rise. So connecting that into the Burlingame shoreline that One Shoreline is leading the project on is really important. In District 3, I'll highlight our proposal related to the Sewer Authority Midcoast Side to make their flood-prone water treatment plant resilient. The proposal that we had to Congress is one of two new starts that was in the House bill to begin a project, a Corps of Engineers project at the water treatment plant. So more on that to come later. And resilience can have relatively distant connections. What I mean by that is here, there's a, building the resilience for the Silicon Valley Clean Water Treatment Plant in Redwood Shores has district both to benefits, benefits both District 4, where you see the blue stars, but also benefits District 3. And that includes the communities shown in that map, communities such as San Carlos and Portola Valley and Woodside. So they can have far reach, especially in regards to transportation systems and water treatment systems. In District 5, we're engaged with the city of Brisbane, Caltrans, and the city of San Francisco, city and county of San Francisco, to look at aligned resilience to sustain the Baylands Development Highway 101 and comply with state guidelines that are now being finalized by the California Coastal Commission and BCDC, requiring all shoreline cities and counties to develop adaptation plans that are coordinated regionally. Our next priority relates to today's climate impacts. In all Supervisor Districts, we have a flood early warning system that you're familiar with, I've spoken about before, and maybe you've seen online during storms. It's funded by an expiring state grant, One Shoreline operating funds, and Measure K. And has allowed us, these funds have allowed us to expand and operate it. In District 1, I'll talk about Bel Air, which is a disadvantaged community in San Bruno, just west of Highway 101 and south of Highway 380, and it has a history of major flooding. Bel Air recently was put into the FEMA flood zone. And in Bel Air, we're trying a different approach to community engagement for both short-term and long-term project funding. We still have technical experts to understand the problem and how to infrastructurally fix it. But we're also trying an intensive door-to-door process with local nonprofits and a climate grief specialist to work with residents who want to understand the challenges and the solutions that are out there because they want to remain in the neighborhood long-term. In Districts 2 and 4, as well as 1 and 3, we're resolving mitigation needs for permits to remove debris from flood-prone creeks, including, the picture shown here, Belmont Creek. In Bel Air and Pescadero, which is in District 3, residents have been using an app that we're partnering with called IC Change that enables them to share experiences related to flooding and other issues through photos, videos, and stories that are shared with One Shoreline and local jurisdictional staff through a live map to inform both emergency response in real-time and long-term project planning of where water goes. And here we have in District 4, example, there are many examples related to our work on extreme storms, both the early warning system and the project that we've spoken about previously. That's, that you see under construction there, a project called Bayfront Canal Atherton Channel Project, which reduced flooding in the most severe events that we saw in December 2022 and early 2023. So in District 5, in addition to a transmitter that we're putting in actually this morning in Sky Lawn Memorial Park in District 3, last week, we installed the transmitter in San Bruno Mountain, District 5, so that gauges in Daly City and Pacifico and the hill areas of Colma, San Bruno, Millbrae, and Burlingame can now communicate with our infrastructure in Redwood City and feed, the feed into our early warning website. With this new geographic range, this month, we'll be installing a new gauge in Millbrae. Okay, so that's all of the work that's described for the scope of work in the Measure K agreement. Those, that's examples of the kind of work. So in 2020, 2021, 2022, One Shoreline received startup funding from all 20 cities, and collectively, it was about $750,000. And that was matched by San Mateo County. So that was for three calendar years. We have the same fiscal year as the county, but we started, we opened our doors January 2020. So that's why those years are listed like that. All 20 cities demonstrated their collective belief, and the county, that their collective belief that we're all in this together, are providing these funds. One Shoreline has, through operating efficiencies and additional funding, enabled, brought in resources that enable us to make this three years of startup funding for operations last eight years. So right now, we have operating funding through December 2027. In addition to the startup funding and in addition to the property taxes we collect from the three flood zones that I mentioned earlier, we brought in mostly project funding of just over $30 million. So that's all good news. Additional piece of good news is last Tuesday, November 5, voters statewide passed what's called the Climate Bond. And that will fund resilience projects statewide. We're definitely looking at that to fund work in San Mateo County. But that doesn't fund ongoing operations. And we have a board committee, a One Shoreline Board of Committee, Board Committee, that's looking at the long-term operational opportunities. And what we're looking for right now is until we can implement those opportunities, which may include a countywide ballot measure related to resilience, until that can happen, we're looking for, to buy time for additional operating support. So the new agreement being considered today is, as mentioned by Vice President Canepa, is for $2.25 million for three years, beginning July 1 of 2025 through June 30, 2028, for the items that are listed here on the slide, including the long-term resilience, the land use planning, working with cities, the work related to today's climate impacts. And then the fourth bullet is kind of a catch-all for other areas where we collaborate with the county. And an example of that is we've had Measure K funding related to exposing communities to FEMA's community rating system in order to bring down the cost of flood insurance that is especially burdensome in some of our low-income communities that are more likely to be in the FEMA flood zone. But that, so that fourth bullet is kind of a catch-all for our work with various county departments. So with that, I will open it up for questions for myself or Carolyn, and thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions, comments? You know, I have a couple of questions. You know, my understanding, and maybe you could speak to it, to the need regionally, is about, in terms of infrastructure, resiliency, is that, what does that number look like right now? Do you know? I know some people have said $100 billion. I'm just curious to, yeah, what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, there was a study that came out that, you know, BCDC was involved with, and I think maybe Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And it looked at the cost related to sea level rise-specific projects. And it was $110 billion. And that was Bay Area-wide, of course. That's BCDC and MTC's purviews. You know, the costs in our county, I hesitate to kind of estimate what percentage of that is in our county. Our county, as I showed in the first slide with some of those graphs, has greater vulnerability than any other Bay Area county. So that would be, that would be concerning, of course. That also brings along many partners. For example, one of the studies I showed had about 80% of Highway 101 in our county is vulnerable. And probably the most vulnerable area is Brisbane. As you know, essentially, 80% of Brisbane is Highway 101, the frontage. So that does bring along partners, and Caltrans is very interested in working with the city and One Shoreline to figure out how to address that. Another vulnerable area of Highway 101 is Redwood City, between Redwood Shores and Seaport Boulevard. It's Highway 101 is frontage. Of course, I showed an image of Highway 1. So it brings along partners like that. My approach to that number, whatever that number is, is do not get frozen by the fact that it's so huge, but to start working on projects, make progress, plan, design, permit, build projects, and figure out who benefits from it and how do we put together funding agreements that capture the multiple beneficiaries of these efforts.
Thanks for answering that question, because one of the things I'm thinking about is like, how do you scale regionally, right? And that requires, like you said, a lot of effort. Maybe there's best practices, other counties can learn from us. My other question for you is, the San Francisco PUC and the city of Daly City, Caltrans, as well as, you know, the county of San Mateo, we're all partners, and there's extreme surges. When extreme surges happen, what basically happens is Lake Merced rises to a level because of the pipe is just, it's very small. This is, you're looking at about a $200 to $300 million project, I think, in terms of the funding. of the funding, they're, they're almost there, they're not there. Are, are you engaged in that whatsoever, or is it, is it different because on the San Francisco side, that's where the ocean beach is where the water dispenses, or just, I don't know if you've had a role, role, or?
We haven't. We've been working with the PUC and the cities of Hillsborough, San Mateo, to look at on, farther down the peninsula, on the bayside, some of the issues around flooding in San Mateo Creek and the role of San Francisco PUC in releasing water, as well as talking with San Francisco PUC about their role in releasing water down Pillar Cidos Creek, which results in flooding in county incorporated areas eventually happen bay. In the example that you provided, we're aware of it, it's certainly a big issue on both sides of the county line, but it's not the project that we've been involved with.
Got it. And one of the things that, you know, I'm not saying, you know, just to kind of consider, and maybe it's, you know, it's good for One Shoreline, it's, it's good for, you know, folks who are, you know, in the border area. I mean, we've given, this board has given about $17 million, right? And, and what happens is, every year, there's a section of Broadmoor, I just, you're, you're familiar, I think we talked about this before, but it just floods. But that might be just, you know, another opportunity to work with, with the various partners. But again, thank you for, for the work that you've done. You've done a tremendous job. Really appreciate your efforts.
If I could, if I could comment on Broadmoor for one second, the, the, the infrastructure that we installed in San Bruno Mountain last week will enable us to talk to Broadmoor in terms of early warning, and that's one of our high priorities, to work with Daly City to, to provide advance warning as much as possible to the community there. So that would be one area we'll be working on.
Thank you so much. That's, thank you. That's going to be real helpful. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd just comment that, you know, sea level rise is really one of the most profound impacts of climate change for San Mateo County, and I'm really proud of the work of One Shoreline since its formation. I think you've seen today that they've been engaged in a wide range of activities, and particularly the, the planning activities are, will bear fruit in the long run. This funding will go a long way to sustain One Shoreline so we can continue its good work.
Wonderful. Any public comment? Oh, Supervisor Paine?
Thank you. I just, Len, I wanted to thank you for your presentation, and I know this is an excellent investment in our community, and I just wanted to publicly thank you for all of the work that you've done, not just on this piece specifically, but going above and beyond in helping other vulnerable communities, particularly also in my district with the Harbor Mobile Home Park and, and, you know, what their needs have been. I know your advocacy, not just with Caltrans, but with moving conversations forward in general, has been amazing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. No speakers for this item from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public comment open for item number 10, an agreement with the Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. Please raise your hand to comment. No hands, Mr. Vice President.
Great. Supervisor Paine, would you like to make a motion on this item?
I'd be happy to move this item forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded, okay. Roll call, please.
Sure. Thank you. Supervisor Paine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to item 11, to introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 2.89 of Title II of the San Mateo County Ordinance Code regarding procurement preference for local businesses, and waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety. This item is sponsored by President Slocum and Supervisor Novello Corzo. President Slocum and Supervisor Corzo, please proceed. Supervisor, do you want to kick this off, or?
However you prefer, President Slocum. Happy to.
You're so flexible. Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. So I just want to start by saying I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be part of this work, along with President Slocum, who has been working with our Chief Equity Officer on this far longer than I have, supporting, the intention of this is to support our local businesses to thrive. We know they're a key, they are key to our vibrant local economy, as well as to be really intentional about how our county invests in local businesses here. So, you know, I think this work is more important now than ever as we enter certain, as we enter potentially uncertain economic times, and this will go a long way in promoting local resiliency. As we know, the board adopted the Anchor Institution Resolution in 2022 to align economic priorities with our priorities for equity inclusion and shared prosperity. The Supplier Diversity Study uncovered many important findings, particularly that we were currently, that we are currently under utilizing small and micro businesses and under utilizing minority LGBTQ plus I and veteran-owned businesses. As a result of this ordinance, we would like to see and be a part of incentivizing business owners from diverse backgrounds to do business with our county and in our county. So I want to emphasize that this ordinance is very fiscally responsible for taxpayers, and there are multiple ways to waive the preference if needed, if it doesn't, if it's not in the best interests of our taxpayers. And the application of the preference can be, I'll, I'll let our Chief Equity Officer explain that piece, but I just wanted to also say that the county, this won't come at an additional cost for the county in terms of adding new positions to implement the ordinance. And with that, I'll hand it over to President Slocum to add anything that he would like, but I am looking forward to hearing from our Chief Equity Officer on the ins and outs of how this would work and how, what potential impact it has in our county.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo. I think you've said it and presented it very well. Obviously, we're excited to bring this to the board for your consideration, and we hope that you'll consider this and vote yes on this. I just want to give a shout out to former Supervisor Carol Groom, who, we worked together back in, as Supervisor Corzo said, May of 2022, we sponsored the initial Anchor Institution Resolution, which included a focus on inclusive staffing and inclusive procurement. And just a quick summary, we, the county retained an outside firm to consult with us and give us some recommendations on inclusive procurement, and to identify gaps and a number of other things. And basically, they concluded their analysis with certain four or five recommendations, which I won't go through here, maybe the Chief Equity Officer will review those, but I would just strongly urge the CEO to, if it hasn't been done already, to look at this report, and there's a lot of data in there, which is very interesting and might help guide future board decisions. And as the supervisor said, this is really, really an important step forward in terms of our bigger-picture goal of creating pathways out of poverty. It's a step towards shared prosperity and economic vitality and equity for county vendors, contractors, and suppliers. And so with that, I would, if it's appropriate, turn it over to the Chief Equity Officer.
Bless you. Good morning, Honorable Supervisors, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Niblin, Clerks Purwawal, and Golistan. I, I'm Shereen Malik Azali Taidi, Chief Equity Officer, I use she/her pronouns, and thank you for having us here today. We are here to give you an overview of the ordinance. I'm going to be joined, I'm going to be stepping off shortly, joined by Valenciera, Manager of Equity and Belonging from the Office of Racial and Social Justice, to give us all the details. But I did want to mention that this ordinance is, been done in partnership with our procurement manager, Jas Sandar, as well as Christina Pazek, who's been incredibly helpful from the county attorney's office, as well as the Inclusive Procurement Committee of the Core Equity Team, and I have to say about 150 or so vendor, county vendors and potential vendors that informed the Inclusive Supplier Diversity Study that you all just mentioned. As you can see in the next slide, that was mentioned, the Anchor Institution framework is, helps us really land this work within this larger umbrella of the committee, of the county being active in looking at the business side of our operations and ensuring that the economic benefits that the county produces also help advance the values of the county around equity inclusion and help even out the playing field to support local, particularly small and micro business enterprises. That has multiple impacts and benefits in the local economy, including the fact that it helps business, local businesses remain and sustain in a difficult and high-priced county. It's also true that local businesses tend to hire more locally as well, which is helpful, and they tend to supply locally. And also, it helps with environmental quality goals that were also just mentioned, because therefore, less transportation of workers as well as less transportation of goods. So to give you the details of the study, I'm going to turn it over to Valenciera.
Good morning, Valenciera. I use she/her pronouns. It's a pleasure to be here with you this morning. So as we mentioned, the Supplier Diversity Study Report is up on the county website, is available to all our residents. These come-ups came out after a year of outreach to our local vendor community, and the intent was to understand the type of vendors the county does business with, and to help best remove the barriers that vendors, especially those that have been historically underrepresented in the county procurement, how to remove those barriers. We will have informational presentations to vendors in December and January to share the final recommendations and findings. Supervisor Corzo highlighted, the study found several things in our, how we do procurement and how to improve our inclusive procurement practices. I want to highlight that in addition to what Supervisor Corzo highlighted, what we found out also is that the vast majority of potentially available local businesses are the small and micro businesses. So, and those overlap with those that are minority-owned LGBTQ-owned as well. So our small business community is also very diverse. So we are here today to introduce a purchasing preference ordinance or the local preference ordinance, and based on the findings of the Supplier Diversity Study, this is a policy tool that assigns a level of preference to vendors based on their location and size in the evaluation of public solicitations. And the purpose is to promote a strong local economy by giving preference to local businesses, local and, local small and local micro businesses, to the extent consistent with the law and the interest of the public. We are proposing to focus on goods and service solicitations above $10,000, and at this point, we are proposing to exclude public work solicitations. I'm not going into details here, but we want to show you that in the Bay Area region, San Mateo County is the only county that does not have a local preference ordinance, and two other counties, Alameda and San Francisco, have local small preference programs, and Santa Clara County is in the stage of exploring the adoption of a local supplier, a small supplier program as well. A lot of details as far as the key concepts of the policy, but I want to highlight here that for this ordinance, we are proposing the definition of local as to be headquartered here in San Mateo County. And we're using the State of California definitions of small and micro businesses because they already have a certification process. And for nonprofits, we are basing our definitions on the, for small and micro nonprofits, based on a recent study done by the Thrive Alliance and the Silicon Valley Nonprofit Council, where they studied the nonprofit market here in the region. So for the proposed ordinance, this, this is how it will work if adopted. So when applying to a county solicitation for goods or services, a local business of any size will be provided with a 5% bid discount for the price-based solicitations, or a 5% additional evaluation points for best value solicitations. Note that the bid discount or the additional evaluation points are applied for evaluation purposes only. When a local small business applies to a county solicitation for goods or services, they will get a total of 8% bid discount or additional evaluation points, depending on the type of solicitation. And when a local micro business applies to a county solicitation for goods or services, they will get a total of 10% bid discount or 10% additional evaluation points. We noted several exemptions and waivers in the ordinance that we still think that will have a significant impact on our local vendor community, and we are proposing an effective date of July 1st, 2025, that will give us enough time to set up the stage for optimal implementation. For, we will be tracking the impact of this ordinance, and we will be reporting to our Chief Financial Officer quarterly to track the impact of this proposed ordinance if adopted. And if all of you decide to adopt it and move it ahead, we'll start building the internal infrastructure to make sure that our e-procurement system can start accommodating this evaluation process and continue to reach to vendors. So this proposed ordinance is one of many recommendations that came out of the Supplier Diversity Study. We will continue to do outreach to the local small and micro business community, but we are also, the Inclusive Procurement Committee of the Core Equity Team is working on finalizing an implementation work plan by the end of this fiscal year, where we are going to be proposing the process and timing for further implementation and recommendations. So with that, I thank you for your consideration, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I do. I actually, I might be a questioner of county council. So when I look at this, I've seen these before, I've actually worked on the other side of them. What I didn't see in here was that, so there are some government contracts that you can't do this with, because they're subject to the requirement of Government Code 25482 that require lowest bidder, and I don't see that exception explicitly listed in the ordinance. It just says whether exceptions by law, and I don't know if it's something we want in the ordinance, say when that Government Code section applies.
Yeah, well, thank you, Supervisor. You're correct that under Proposed Section 2.89.050, there is a specific carve-out for situations where preference is preempted by local or state or federal law. You know, we could certainly be more specific and call out particular sections if you wanted to. It's my view that that language is sufficient to pick up the particular situation you're talking about, but again, we hadn't attempted to catalog the various places where preemption might occur. We just sort of had that blanket statement. My colleague, Christina Pashik is here also, and she's worked extensively with Belen and, and the folks that, the folks who've had, had point on this, and I don't know if you have anything to add. have anything to add.
But the problem is in application, how is the department supposed to know to check whether or not they can apply it or not?
Well, there's certainly an education piece that we're going to have to do there, to your point. And I think that's part of what we would hope to accomplish between now and July when this comes online, is that we make sure that we have good training materials, to your point, so that departments know that there are places they need to look and things that they need to check to ensure that we don't run afoul of those requirements.
Okay. I'm a little nervous about it. I also, as constructed, I'll go along with it, but I think we really need to follow up telling, with telling the departments when they can't apply this. What I'm worried about candidly is that in the current environment, there's going to be a challenge of these types of ordinances, since specifically there's going to be a Commerce Clause challenge for interstate activity, how it affects interstate. And these ordinances are going to have to be very tight in the future. And so I know there's one California State Attorney General opinion that relates to the Equal Protection Clause that talks about making sure you have these exceptions put forward. So I just want to make sure that what we do tightens it up so we don't get in a situation where we're challenged and create bad precedent.
Completely understand. And that, again, is a training piece that I know we'll be looking very carefully at.
Any questions? Yes.
Thank you. Belen, I want to also thank you. You have been part of every single conversation related to this work, so thank you so much for your many, many hours working through how this will actually work in practice. Supervisor Mueller, I want to acknowledge your concerns and I just, I guess a quick question. For the counties that are our neighbors, I'm assuming they have similar language, and I wonder if we know whether they either outline all of the clauses where there are exceptions or, or if we're kind of doing the norm, which is to have it be more of a blanket statement.
I'm going to have to defer to my colleague. You'll have to approach the mic, if you could approach the mic, Christina.
Yeah, I, I would have to look at the actual ordinances to see whether they catalog them. I know in general, you know, it would be common to have exceptions for where it's inapplicable due to, due to preemption, like we said, but I don't recall whether they specifically call out that, the, the section that Supervisor Mueller mentioned or others.
Thank you. Maybe that's something that we can look at then.
Supervisor, absolutely. I'd note that if the board acts date would be to introduce the ordinance, and if we, after introducing it, went back and determined that there was a significant, a significant variation between what we're proposing to do here and what other jurisdictions have done, we would advise the board.
And I might mention, I think it's such a good point that you all are raising, one in which we recognize that the ordinance itself, as long as it's legally sound, ultimately the departments will not necessarily refer back to the ordinance language itself, but will, will be really need proactive educational opportunities as well as the templates and materials directly in the procurement software that they'll be using, so that it's not a side event that they'll be informed. So we actually do have plans over the next six months to do a series of trainings for anyone in the procurement system, in the procurement process, working closely with our procurement manager.
Yeah. The other concern I have, and I, is going to go really to training materials, I've seen ordinances used like this in other counties, where large companies basically will pick a small company to do the application, and they pay them, and then the large company does the work. And so you have to really figure out how to monitor that, because basically large companies, basically, it's, I mean, it's, I guess it's good for that small company, but I think it's self-defeating of what you're trying to accomplish.
Thank you for that. And I think the monitoring will be really helpful for us. One of the things to note also is that because public works projects, which have fairly complicated multi-contract, they're not, they're exempt from this, that we have a smaller pool of contracts to be able to monitor that kind of activity.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had one more question. Would, Belen, in your conversations with Thrive and, and other folks in the small business community, how are they receiving this ordinance?
So this came out as part of the vendor outreach, as one of the many proposals. And it was noted that San Mateo is the only county in the region that doesn't have one. So in general, there's a, you know, it came out of their, their own experience trying to work with the county.
And just one addition, we don't necessarily have, as you'll see in the, and you and Supervisor Slocum worked really closely on the ensuring that nonprofit organizations, when having, in submitting a bid with for-profit organizations, would also receive the same benefits as with the small and micro and local. But separately, they are exempt when it's only nonprofit organizations.
So I don't, we don't have to go over it today, but what I really encourage you all, the term that's used in the industry is called partner. And what will happen is a small organization is approached, or sometimes they approach, a larger partner organization, and different counties have created rules about the partner and what that looks like, and how much dollars go to the larger organization versus the other. It's really important to drill down into those facts, because what ends up happening certain, in some cases, is you have a small business that really is just a conduit for a very, you basically have a battle of the large businesses, using these small businesses that get a very small amount of those contracts. And all you're, you're basically just figuring out, those large businesses basically then get the discount and they cut out all the medium businesses. They cut out everybody else, they cut out true competition amongst the small businesses, and it's a very select through, because if you think about it, that small business that has that partner with all those resources, they grade real well. And so I really encourage the details of how this is implemented are going to be really important.
Thank you for that.
I'll just close out and say, thank you for all of the work that you've put into this. I think this is a really concrete step towards, you know, implementing what we say our values are in the many facets of county government. This is a really big one, and you know, I, I'm not, I'm, I'll guess how many years behind we are, the other counties, in terms of implementing an ordinance like this. But I'm, I'm just excited, you know, to see 10, 20 years from now, what the impacts will be and how that, how this ordinance is an investment in the future of more thriving local business. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Supervisor Slocum?
Nothing here. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
You know, I do have several questions, and thank you for the, for the presentation. What impact will this have on the Project Labor Agreement Amendment currently in development with the opportunity of the union signatory contractors to bid on work? I know there's exemptions that you've laid out. What we're doing today, that doesn't affect that, correct?
Not in any way that I'm familiar with. The Project Labor Agreement would be around public works projects, is that right?
Correct.
And this, this ordinance specifically exempts all public works projects.
Thank you very much. And then the local preference section, define responsive and responsible contractor. What is the pre-qualification process to establish their responsible?
That's a, that's a good question. I know that we have questions within our, our request for proposals process, and Jazz can share a little bit more about it.
Hello, Jazz Sander, the county procurement manager. So all of our RFPs have minimum qualifications written out based on the service, so they would all, any proposer would have to meet those minimum qualifications and also not be debarred from federal state funding.
Great. And you know, you talked about, you know, regionally, what's going on. That was, that's pretty compelling. Can you talk a little about, about small and micro business, micro businesses, particularly in the construction sector? What degree of capacity is their staff? Are they able to scale large capital projects?
So this ordinance doesn't address construction projects?
Great. See where I'm going with this, right? So my understanding, and just through clarification, and just that, that really what we're trying to do around a potential project labor agreement is not affected any way or shape or form within this ordinance, correct?
Supervisor, yeah, I, I agree with that proposition. This is, again, it carves out the public work contracts that would be the subject of a project labor agreement.
Great. Thank you very much. Why don't we take a public comment, remote and virtual?
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Canepa. I don't have any speaker steps for this item, so Madam Quirk, please proceed.
Public comment on Zoom now open for item 11, introduction of an ordinance for local businesses procurement preference. No hands raised, Mr. Vice President.
Great. Supervisor Corso, would you like to move forward with the ordinance?
I'd like to invite President Slocum to do that.
Okay.
Thank you Supervisor. I would make a motion to approve the introduction of an ordinance regarding procurement preference for local businesses, micro business, and waive the reading of the ordinance in its entirety.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sure, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Corso.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Slocum.
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
To you. Good job. Okay, we are now out to item 12, which is a resolution authorizing a second amendment to the agreement with ExecuShield to provide general security services and additional security guards during Board of Supervisor meetings. Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes. You have before you a resolution to add $750,000 to our contract agreement with ExecuShield for general security and addition of security at board meetings.
I'll be chairing the meeting now, so.
Can we recess the meeting? I'd like us all present for this vote.
I think the, it's, I think it's up to the, to the acting chair, I suppose. We could go ahead and declare a brief, a brief recess.
Vice President Canepa did not request that we recess this during this time, so I'm going to, I'm going to say we just move forward.
Okay. Well, I'm actually making a motion, so could I at least have a, see if someone's interested in seconding it? I'd like to have, I'd actually like to have the full board vote on this item.
Are we expecting Supervisor Canepa to come back?
He did not say when he would be coming back, so I don't have, he, he directed me to chair the meeting and keep it moving forward, so I'm happy to hear if there's a second on this, but otherwise, I'd like to proceed.
I'll second it.
Well, given that there's a motion to second, then I'd suggest we go ahead, to the presiding officer, that we go ahead and take a roll call to see about whether or not the board is going to be in recess.
Are we going to be required, we have two board members that'd like a recess. May we have a recess?
I think you just called for a vote, so we can take a vote.
So the vote is to take recess or to approve the item?
To take recess.
Take recess, okay. So I'll take the roll call to take a recess, so.
And we might, we might, just as long as we're talking about, we might indicate that a timeframe that the, the board has in mind with respect to recess, whether it's a.
Let's just take 10 minutes. Find out if Supervisor Canepa plans on returning.
Very good.
Sure. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Corso.
No.
Thank you Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you, and Supervisor Slocum?
No.
Okay. Supervisor Canepa is absent, so the motion fails.
This is the first board I've ever been on where a board member's requested a recess, more than one board member's requested a recess and.
I'd like to just proceed on the item, please. So can we, I believe Deputy County Executive gave us a summary of what this item is, and I believe this is an item that requires action?
Yes, it does.
Do we have a motion to approve this, or do we want to go to public comment?
We can take public comment first, Acting Chair. So I don't have any speaker steps for item number 12, so Madam Quirk, please proceed.
Public comment on Zoom now open for item number 12. This is in agreement with ExecuShield to provide security services in County Office III for the Board of Supervisor meetings. Please click raise hand to comment. No hands raised, Acting Chair.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve item 12?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Sure. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Corso.
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller is absent. Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Canepa is absent. So motion passes with three to two, two Supervisors being absent, which are Canepa and Mueller.
Okay, thank you. We are moving on now to item 13, which is a resolution authorizing a one-time grant of discretionary Measure K funding, and I'll hand it over to Supervisor Dave Pine to introduce this item.
Hi, thank you. This is a request to authorize a grant to the Health Plan of San Mateo, acting as the fiscal agent for the San Mateo County Oral Health Coalition, in an amount not to exceed $100,000 to support the 2024 Oral Health Strategic Plan. There's really three specific areas that this will help us support. First, with regard to workforce development, it will encourage existing providers to treat uninsured, underinsured, menacal, or other underserved patients. The Coalition will identify, promote, and pay for training opportunities for dental providers. Secondly, it will allow the Coalition to engage a consultant, develop a communication plan to target underserved patients. And with regard to organizational infrastructure, the Coalition will provide a stipend for an individual or, or an organization to chair and lead the Coalition to help establish sustainable infrastructure. So that's the essence of the proposal.
Thank you so much Supervisor Pine. With that, I think we can hand it over to Suki for public comment.
Thank you, Acting Chair. At this time, I do have one speaker from chambers, and that's going to be Tracy Fetter. And you'll have one minute, and then we'll proceed with the Zoom comments.
Good morning Supervisors. I'm Tracy Fetter, the CEO of Sunrisers Health at Dental Health, and I'm here representing the San Mateo County Oral Health Coalition, of which I'm a core team member. And we want to thank supervisor Dave Pine for putting this forward and for his longstanding support of oral health in San Mateo County. And we want to thank you for helping us build and continue the important work we're doing as a coalition that brings together nonprofits and government agencies that are addressing oral health needs of individuals in San Mateo County. So we deeply thank you for your years of support.
Thank you. Madam Quirk, please proceed for Zoom comments.
Public comment on Zoom open for item number 13, District 1 Measure K item to the Health Plan of San Mateo. Please click raise hand. No hands raised.
Thank you so much. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this Measure K request.
I move the item forward.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Corso.
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Slocum.
Yes.
Thank you, and Supervisor Mueller and Canepa absent, so the motion passes with three to two.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to item 14, which is a resolution to authorize a one-time grant to Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. That is a request from my office, and so I will share briefly that this Measure K request is the outcome of a process my team and I completed to recommend awards for District 2 discretionary funds. I am very proud to, of the application process and criteria we developed around alignment, service area, equity, and impact. This specific request is, again, for Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto to make sure, to provide services in District 2 around legal access and representation. The, the funding for this request will support attorneys in representing tenants in court and in preventing some of our county's most vulnerable residents, families, seniors, veterans, and people with disabilities from being displaced out of our county or falling into homelessness. With that, I respectfully request support in, in passing this resolution, and, and I will go ahead and motion to, to pass it. and, and I will go ahead and motion to, to pass it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Before we take the roll call, let me ask for a public comment. There's none from chambers, so Madam Quirk, please proceed.
Public comment on Zoom now open for item number 14, District 2 Measure K item to Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. One hand raised for Madeline Musante. Madeline, please unmute and begin.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am the Associate Director of Development at Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto, and I just want to thank the, uh, thank the District 2 office for this recommendation. Clespa offers free legal services and social work supports to San Mateo County residents focusing on housing, immigration, workers' rights, consumer protection, and reentry. Through collaboration with tenants, our housing program safeguards affordable housing, fights displacement, and advocates for all residents. There is no guaranteed right to an attorney in civil legal processes, denying low-income tenants access to counsel and leaving them more vulnerable to homelessness should their eviction go to court. With District 2's support, Clespa will sustain legal advocacy and services to address these barriers, supporting District 2 families to stay in their homes and combat abuse fostering a sense of community and belonging. Separately from this request, I hope the board will continue to, to invest in legal services, particularly in the areas of housing and immigration. Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments, Madam Chair.
And we have a motion on the floor, so I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa is absent, so motion passes with four to one.
Thank you. Moving on to item 15, Measure K request, again, from my district office for a grant, a Measure K grant for California Clubhouse. This grant request is for capacity building, training on motivational interviewing, community resilience, and trauma-informed care for California Clubhouse. I'll just add that this California Clubhouse is one of our local nonprofits that invest in rehabilitation for our community members. They are dedicated to supporting individuals living with mental illness and will be moving very soon to, next to Al Camino House, which is in District 2. And these funds, again, will be used to invest in training staff for this vulnerable population. And with that, I request support in approving this, this grant. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Okay. Thank you. And before I take the roll call, Supervisor Canepa has arrived to the meeting and is presiding over the meeting now. And there are no speakers from, from chambers, so Madam Quirk, please proceed.
Public comment now open for item 15, District 2 Measure K item to California Clubhouse. Please click raise hand. One, one hand raised from India. India, please unmute and begin.
Hi, my name is India Hargit. I'm the Assistant Director at Kimbinar Redwood House. And we partner with California Clubhouse, so a lot of our clients can get connected to their services and have more social support and a sense of independence. I know that they do excellent work, so I hope the board will be in favor of this measure, because, again, I work hand in hand with them and see the work that they do. And they definitely deserve to have more opportunities for staff training and growth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, India. No further speakers, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, and I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously.
Well, now moved item 16, another Measure K item from Supervisor Corso for a resolution authorizing District discretionary Measure K funds not to exceed $50,000 to Sitik Council, Sitike Counseling Center for the Break the Cycle Batter Intervention Program Expansion. Supervisor Corso?
Thank you so much. As my colleagues know, there has been a lot of work that our county has been involved in regarding, really confronting the reality of intimate partner violence in our community. And as part of that, it is very clear that the intervention programs, like the one that Sitike provides in our community, is, is a part of how we really interrupt those cycles of violence. I personally really appreciate the Break the Cycle, the name of this program and, and what that, what that name kind of inspires for, for folks that, one, are required to do this program, and two, for just the general community and how it's, you know, it's a part of really the solutions to the crisis we have regarding intimate partner violence. We have Carrie Kirby in chambers today, who I would like to invite to share, you know, more about how these funds will be used in, in our community. And Carrie Kirby is the Executive Director of Sitike Counseling Center.
Thank you, Supervisor. Sitike is an Apache word. It means a group of non-blood kin that come together in a time of crisis. And I always like to lead with that. I think that really embodies everything we're trying to do at Sitike. Since I joined the team in 2020, the need for our services has grown 65%. We're now serving 1,500 folks a year with a small 16-person staff. And our Batter Intervention Program is one that's grown substantially over time. What's unique to us is we serve men, women, and people of all genders. We provide our services in English, Spanish, and Tagalog. And so we're really trying to meet the community need and ensure that violence against all people is, is reduced here. So very excited for this opportunity. We're gonna be using the funds to train all of our staff, administrative and clinical, to become certified in domestic violence if they're not. For all of our staff that are already certified, they're going to become advanced trainers and hopefully be able to share that knowledge with other nonprofits and community-based organizations in San Mateo and save lives. That's our ultimate goal. So thank you. We look forward to the support and the vote and appreciate your time.
Great, thank you very much. Any comments? Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam Quirk, please proceed.
Public comment on Zoom open for item 16, Measure, District 2 Measure K item to Sitike Counseling Center. No hands raised, Mr. Vice President.
Supervisor Corso?
Thank you. I'd like to motion to adopt the resolution authorizing a grant to Sitike Counseling Center.
Second.
Thank you. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
Thank you, and Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Clerk, we're up to item 17, a Measure K item request from Supervisor Mueller, a resolution authorizing District discretionary Measure K funds not to exceed $76,000, to Abundant Grace Coastside Worker to provide funding for its Full Circle Food Justice, Farmer Apprenticeship, and Conservation Crew Programs and to support the farmers market, local market match programs. Supervisor Mueller?
Thank you. Abundant Grace Coastside Workers serves over 120 people experiencing homelessness throughout the year with the Full Circle Food Justice Program, which addresses both workforce and employment needs along with tackling food insecurity. Through the Full Circle Food Justice Program, Abundant Grace also works in partnership with the local organizations to distribute over 20,000 pounds of fresh organic fruits and vegetables for free each year to local low-income farmworker families on the coast side. About 500 low-income residents receive free, fresh produce throughout this program annually. In the Farm Apprenticeship Program, a group of five participants meets one day per week for seven weeks to learn farm skills such as generous, such as greenhouse management, urban flower growing, pest management on an organic farm, irrigation, tool, and machine maintenance, and many other skills that are transferable to other jobs, such as resume development, mock interviews, job searching, and other supports to help people find jobs following the program. Participants also are provided weekly mindfulness, meditation, and staff-guided personal future authoring course to think deeply about the next six months to a year, their priorities, what necessary changes to make to achieve their goals. All sessions are approximately three hours long and are staffed by an abundant grace's program manager and two farm managers, as well as special speakers. In the Conservation Core Program, a group of five participants meet one day per week for seven weeks to work in the wilderness areas of the farm, removing invasive species, planting trees, clearing trails, and restoring a pond. Participants learn about climate change, carbon sequestration, and hear from outside speakers from nonprofit environment groups. As with the Farm Apprenticeship Program, Abundant Grace focuses on achieving group success, working together through individual struggles. This discretionary grant will be used to fund the Farm Apprenticeship and Conservation Crew Programs, which provides hands-on apprenticeship and training to San Mateo County residents, offering each seven-week program five to we, five to six times per year, and produce the local organic foods that are distributed to the farmworker families in the Full Circle Justice, a food justice program. Additionally, this grant will enable Abundant Grace to provide $11,000 of certified farmers market script to qualifying low-income coastside residents and seniors to access healthy, nutritious, and local foods. This is especially important for residents who may not meet income eligibility to qualify for CalFres, WIC, or other federally funded nutrition programs due to the especially high cost of living in San Mateo County or citizenship requirements. District 3 has informed the grantee organization that this grant is one-time only and that the grantee organization will need to find other sources of the funding going forward. This time, I'd like to go ahead and move the item.
All right, the item is moved. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam Quirk, please proceed.
Public comment for item 17, District 3 Measure K item to Abundant Grace. Please click raise hand. One hand raised for Eric, Aaron Torrey. Aaron, please unmute and begin.
I'm sorry, we can barely hear you.
I'm sorry. Is that any better?
No, it's, it's really low.
Okay. Any, any better now?
No, it's still.
I was just dropping in to say thank you.
Okay, well, you, we can hear you a little bit, but you can, you can speak, it's okay. Thank you.
Okay, that might be the end of public comment, right, Madam Quirk?
Yes, we still have Aaron here. Aaron, if you wanted to just give it one more try. Okay. Aaron, are you still with us? I see your audio on. Okay, I think she's, I'm not hearing any sound anymore, Mr. Vice President.
Great, thank you very much. So my understanding is there's a motion, there's a second. I give a roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
And Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Wonderful. And now to our final regular agenda item of the day, item 18, also Measure K request. This one for President Slocum, a resolution authorizing District discretionary Measure K funds not to exceed $54,000 to Vida Verde Nature Education, three overnight trips for schools located in District 4. President Slocum?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Vida Verde is actually located in Supervisor Mueller's district, and it's, as some of you might know, it's a magical place that, through its history, has served over 14,000 students from low-income schools. And they're located in San Gregorio, and they provide free outdoor education programs to students from primarily low-income schools. And each classroom camping trip at Vida Verde is a three-day overnight, action-packed experience that takes place on their 100-acre site and farm, which is a pretty amazing place if you've never visited, as well as nearby state parks and beaches. And many of the students, many of the students have never been to the beach and never seen a forest, never seen a redwood tree. Their trips include cooking and cleaning up as a class, team-building games, exercise, a campfire, camping, and a, and a great deal more. It's a pretty amazing place, and I would ask for your support of this Measure K $54,000 request. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any comments? Seeing none. Any public comment?
And no speakers from chambers. Madam Quirk, please proceed.
Please click raise hand on Zoom to comment for item 18, District 4 Measure K item to Vida Verde Nature Education. No hands raised, Mr. Vice President.
Great, thank you very much. Is, are there motions, Supervisor Slocum? President Slocum?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'd make a motion to approve this Measure K funding request for Vida Verde.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Sure. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you. That's a yes. Supervisor Slocum?
Yes.
Thank you, and then Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved unanimously.
Okay, that concludes today's Board of Supervisors' regular meeting, and will be convening to close session to address item 40, which involves conferences with legal counsel. County Attorney Niblin, do we anticipate having anything to report out of closed session?
Un, it's unknown.
Okay, thank you so much. This meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you. The board is currently in recess. The time is 12:27 PM, and we will, will reconvene after closed session. All right, Mr. Vice President, we're back in open session. The time is 1:26 PM. And for the record, all supervisors are present except Supervisor Slocum. So, Mr. President, please proceed.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Clerk. With that, let me get it to our county attorney, Mr. Niblin, John Niblin.
Thank you. I just wanted to state that there's nothing to report out of closed session. Thanks.
All right, thank you so much for that report. With that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. All the time is 1:27 PM. Thanks, all.